Is City Manager Garcia, are you here?
Yes ma'am.
I didn't want to start without you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Dana Beach City Commission Virtual Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 27th, and it is 7:00 PM. Call the roll please.
Mayor James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodman. Thank you. City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansbro.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can you please have a moment of silence? Can we please stand for the pledge? Congratulations. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. Thank you. Presentations and special event approvals. Have a brief county update by our Broward County Commissioner, Tim Ryan. I don't see him.
Hi, this is Eugene. I'm Eugene Bold with the County Commission. I work for Commissioner Ryan. He was in another meeting and he's running a few minutes behind, but he should be here momentarily. I apologize for that. But like I said, he should join us within the next five minutes or so.
Okay, that's okay. We'll come back to him.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Is Ms. Latima King, are you? On? I don't see Latima. On as well, so we'll wait for those two. And then we'll go to the mobility study by Dr. Fred Bletcher, Kimbley Horn. I don't see him.
Mayor.
Yes.
The presentation will be given by Stuart Robertson, and I see him on.
Okay. Okay. Good evening Stuart.
Good evening Mayor and Commissioners of the City of Dana Beach. My name is Stuart Robertson with Kimbley Horn and Associates. I will be giving a brief presentation this evening on the mobility study. Dr. Bletcher from FAU worked with us on this, but he was unable to join the meeting tonight, so he will be we will be, I will be covering his portion of the study. I do have some presentation slides. Shall I share my screen so you can see those slides?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, if you could just let me know if you are able to to see my screen.
Yes, we see it.
Great. Okay, so FAU and Kimbley Horn prepared a mobility study at the request of the city. The purpose was to evaluate transportation conditions and develop a proposed set of improvements that would help to manage traffic congestion, to improve safety for all, and to encourage alternate forms of transportation within the city. Our project began with a background analysis where we looked at a review of prior plans and programs in order to ensure consistency with the city's initiatives. We also collected transportation data on the city's network and also conducted field observations of existing conditions. We also reviewed data from the American Community Survey, which is a product of the US Census Bureau. This gave us some background into the demographics of the city and some of the interesting findings that I do want to point out as context is that in Dana Beach, we have a higher percentage of our population that bike, walk, and use public transit to get to work than Broward County as a whole. We also have fewer residents who are able to work from home than Broward County as a whole. And on average, people in Dana Beach have fewer vehicles available to them per trip. And this is measured by vehicles available per occupied housing unit, where we have a higher percentage of no-vehicle and one-vehicle households than Broward County as a whole. So all this tells us is that Dana Beach is an important place to invest in transportation improvements for all modes of transportation. The next item in the scope was a pavement assessment, and this was conducted by FAU. And the pavement assessment essentially tells us information related to asphalt cracking and what is really happening with the roadway service, which may affect the pavement performance and determine the severity of the damage and needed improvements. Now luckily, what we found in Dana Beach, the pavement rating is mostly good to excellent as evidenced by the green lines that you see on this map. We also looked at excess asphalt conditions, and we found that most of the roadways in Dana Beach do not have excess asphalt. However, when roadways do have excess asphalt, it can result in additional flooding of the swales and sidewalks due to the excess of impervious conditions on the street. We looked at the pavement assessment, including a term called base failure. This was essentially assessed on a degree of failure. Major issues for base failure are longitudinal crackings along the roadway. The most severe base failure issues are near water bodies and in the southeastern portion of the city. In fact, the worst street was found to be southeast Fourth Street for base failure. FAU also prepared a traffic model where we looked at the roadways highlighted in yellow on this map. And based on the results of the model, we determined that multimodal transportation improvements are needed on the roadways highlighted in blue, green, and purple. The traffic study model found that, for the most part, the most traffic congestion on the roadway is on federal highway, which is the roadway that shows up in the magenta colors on the travel delay graphics for northbound and southbound. This was the roadway that had the most consistently high traffic delay results in the model. The different levels of traffic congestion in the roadway network are shown on the slide on screen now. The roadway in red is US One Federal Highway, which, as I mentioned, had the heaviest level of congestion in the network. Network roadways that were identified with a moderate level of congestion include Sheridan Street, Sterling Road, and Griffin Road, among others. Next, we stepped into a mobility analysis in order to identify the multimodal conditions of the city. The map that you see here presents the existing bicycle facilities. The red lines are the on-road bicycle lanes or conventional bike lanes within the city. And the yellow line is a multipurpose path, which means a separated area for walking and bicycling that is adjacent to the roadway. The one tiny little piece of multipurpose path that we identified in the inventory was the New River Greenway along State Road 84. There are longer sections of bicycle lanes, but still, from the map, you can see that the network is relatively disconnected. So one of the goals of the project was to identify improvements that would improve the level of connectivity of the bicycle lanes. We looked at existing Broward County transit routes and found there's actually quite a good coverage of Broward County transit routes within the city of Dana Beach. Most cities don't have the type of coverage that especially goes into residential neighborhoods off of the principal roadway network that Dana Beach does. And so this is indicative of a community that could have an even higher percentage of transit ridership with investments in what we call first and last mile improvements, improving the walkability and the bike ability for folks to be able to access the bus stops. We also looked at sea level rise vulnerability, and for this, we used a 2045 sea level rise model developed by FAU, looking at roadways that would be impacted by a two-foot rise in sea levels. And we found that many of the streets in the eastern portion of the city, south of Dana Beach Boulevard, particular Third, Fourth, and along Fifth Avenue and the streets to the to the west of Fifth Avenue would be vulnerable. Many roadways such as Gulf Stream, north of Dana Beach Boulevard, and many of the local streets, north of Dana Beach Boulevard, and even some of the roadways to the west, the north-south residential streets that connect off of Griffin Road could be vulnerable to a two-foot rise in sea level. So we wanted to present this information as part of the mobility study for future planning as you're developing your capital improvement program to potentially include resilience improvements if roadway improvements are being programmed on these roadways. We conducted a public engagement process as part of this project, which included virtual meetings. We held meetings with commissioners to gain input toward the beginning of the public engagement process, and then held two virtual public open houses, one during the afternoon and one during the evening, in order to try to be accommodating to different schedules. We also conducted a public survey that was available for people to fill out during the course of the engagement portion of the project. It got some really interesting results back, one of which, as we expected, was that most people do travel by personal vehicle as their primary transportation mode, most people that responded to the survey. This matches the trend of the ACS data from the census, but of course, we do know that walking, biking, and public transit does have a higher percentage split than the remainder, than the county as a whole. Interestingly, we found that on thoughts on traffic congestion, the most common response in the survey was that traffic congestion was a minor problem. The median response was major problem, and the fewest people thought that it was the single biggest problem in the city. And in terms of improvements that people would like to see within Dana Beach, some of the top four responses were more sidewalks, wider and/or shaded sidewalks, better street lighting, and improved connections between sidewalks. And so there seemed to be a trend related to more comfortable walking environments within the city. We asked people to rate the reasons that they either do not walk more frequently or do not bike more frequently within the community. And the most common response when it came to work trips was certainly that that lack of showers at the work site are not a major reason. That was true for both walking and biking. So this means that end-of-trip facilities, we call it, the lack of end-of-trip facilities are not a major barrier for people, but that things like including more sidewalks, including more comfortable sidewalks and bike lanes would be more major reasons that people would walk or bike in the future more than they currently do if we were to invest in that type of infrastructure. So finally, to wrap up the presentation with a summary of the capital improvement recommendations, which of course is part of the report that you have on this project, we developed a toolkit of improvements that the city could pursue as part of multimodal transportation. Of course, this does include things like more bike lanes on the roadway. The Broward County standard is now actually a buffered bike lane that has a double stripe between the bicycle space and the car space on the roadway. More enhanced crosswalks, more multipurpose paths, which are, as I mentioned briefly earlier, separated space for people to walk and bike adjacent to the roadway. Sharrows or shared lane markings, which are the green bicycle pavement marking that you see on the toolkit. This can be applied for local residential streets that are, by their nature, low-speed and low-volume streets. And so we might not necessarily want to widen those streets to provide bike lanes, but they might already serve as good bike routes as they are just because of the the character of the streets being low speed and low volume for cars. One potential for a type of traffic calming improvement would be what we call a dynamic speed feedback sign, which is a sign that registers a motorist speed passing by by radar and then displays that in real time compared to the speed limit. This is sort of an initial way to introduce traffic calming to a street or a neighborhood that provides a sign-based improvement that could potentially lead to further physical traffic calming elements in the future if we find that the dynamic speed feedback sign by itself doesn't produce the ultimate result of people obeying the speed limit on a street. The type of traffic calming that I would refer to as more physical improvements are things like speed humps or speed tables along a roadway. And then we get into some pedestrian lighting and street trees and landscaping, which are ways to improve the functionality of a sidewalk and having folks feel more comfortable when they're on the sidewalk goes a long way toward improving the the walkability and ultimately, the number of people, the percentage of people that walk and bike in a neighborhood. So the capital improvement recommendations map includes projects developed to provide a more connected multimodal network within the city. Does include a network of what we're calling complete streets corridors, which are the dashed blue lines or the solid blue line, which are neighborhood streets that with pavement markings for bicyclists as well as sidewalks for people to walk, can become good complete streets alternates within our neighborhoods, alternates to busier roads such as US One. We also worked with FAU to develop a list of the projects that likely are going to need pavement resurfacing in the future and tried to align the complete streets corridors to those infrastructure improvements so that we can kind of get a two-for-one going on where we could get complete streets improvements that are implemented at the same time that a resurfacing or a utilities project is going to be implemented. The report also includes a table of all of the roadway improvement projects, the the limits of those projects, and then the project type. For example, southeast Second Avenue is one of our complete streets corridor improvements, and the limits of that are from Sheridan Street to Dana Beach Boulevard. And the complete street solutions that are identified, including upgrading the sidewalks, adding crosswalks, lighting, landscaping, and sharrows, which are those bicycle lane pavement markings that we saw earlier on the toolkit. So that wraps up my presentation, and I would be happy to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you. Um. Is there any of the elected officials that have any questions? I can't really see if your hands are raised or not with this shared screen. I see.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
I wanted to know how many people participated in the survey? How many residents were you able to get feedback from?
I don't know right off the top of my head, but I can look that up in the report for you.
Okay.
And I don't see.
A secondary question is that when we had our meeting, we talked about trolleys or a different mode of transportation that might be able to go to to the beach, to Dana Point, to our major neighborhoods. Is that something that we were able to consider through this study?
Something, yeah, similar to a vendor that would provide potentially on-demand service to the to the residents. That's something that could be certainly pursued by the city. It wasn't necessarily part of the scope of what we were developing in this mobility study, but I certainly agree with you that there's a potential there, especially for connecting folks to to the beach and the other popular areas within developing areas. to the beach and the other popular areas within developing areas within the city.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate the mobility study. Want to help us when we bring forth ideas and and projects. And hopefully we can become a city that does not have so much congestion. And we can offer our residents different means of transportation. So I appreciate it until that's
I will. And I just was able to look up the answer to Commissioner Davis's question with thirty seven participants in the mobility survey.
Am I muted?
Oh, not anymore. We can hear you now.
Okay, sorry, I've been saying talking, asking to speak for a moment. So I had a quick question and I may have asked it during my, whenever the discussion was. But my question was, you know, in the context of doing a mobility study. And the information that it it seems about what the the residents want, what the commissioners think is best. You know, what the layout of the land looks like. When when you're talking about things like biking more and more walkway space, how does that work in the context of like when you're in a state like Florida that is car centric? And are there any examples of cities that have successfully been able to become to significantly increase their walkability and bikeability within within being within a state where that's not prioritized at all?
I think we are making strides in Florida to try to overcome our reputation around car centricity. And certainly we we do not have a good record when it comes to our safety rates here in Florida. But there are a lot of cities that are starting to starting to make a difference and some of them even here locally, like the city of Fort Lauderdale is one of the leaders in the National Association of City Transportation Officials or NACTO. And so they've been able to implement some complete streets demonstration projects on several roadways in the city, such as on Northeast Thirteenth Street. In an area that is starting to develop. You know, a nice mix of uses and they've seen an increase in walking and biking on that particular street. And many of the other cities are applying for and winning grants in this area. As well, the Broward MPO has assisted cities to win mobility grants both at the state and federal level to begin implementing mobility projects. And one of which is on Southwest Fortieth Avenue. Which is a road that will improve a section of Fortieth Avenue, including portions in Hollywood and in Dania Beach is getting bike lanes and sidewalks. And so that's one benefit that the city will be getting from a mobility project and there could be others yet to come. So I think we are starting to make incremental improvements, but it certainly in Florida is, as you mentioned, it's kind of a car centric landscape right now. And with the improvements also that the county has made to their design standards for bicycle lanes. To include include the green pavement markings as well as the double line buffer now. I think we're going to continue to make improvements in where we stand related to walking and biking.
Yeah, I I just think, you know, I I'd like to be, and I know this is sort of beyond the scope and it's what we'll do with the information that was garnered from the study, but I mean, from my standpoint, I know I would rather look at other like either micro mobility vehicles or the the trolleys or whatever, something besides walking and biking because I I just, most people who live in Dania Beach don't work in Dania Beach. They work in Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, Miami. So I I mean, and it's still a death trap in a lot of places down here to be biking. It's just not, it's not safe yet. And I guess I agree that there's incremental changes and improvements, but it seems like there's still a long way to go down in this area in South Florida.
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Otman, I mean, Llewellyn.
Thank you, Stuart. I just, I have a question. You said that there were only thirty seven participants in the survey?
Yes.
Was, I mean, how many people, I mean, was this like, did you open it up to more people? It just didn't get a very good response? Is that what it was?
Yeah, it was opened up to anyone that wanted to participate.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering, I mean, did you, hopefully, did you get like at least different parts of the city? Because we spread out, even though it's a small city, we are kind of spread out and there's different issues in different parts of the city. I'm just wondering if it was representative of all the different areas.
Yeah, I do feel like it was, even though it was a small sample size, it was at least representative of different areas of the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again, Stuart.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate your time.
Next, we'll have a brief county update from our county commissioner, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. And the operative words here are brief. So I wanted to talk about a couple of things. I hope everybody is doing well and enjoying the nice weather because it won't be remaining cool for much longer. We had a item that came up on the agenda last week for the county commission with regard to a loan program that Dania Beach had had received a loan from Broward County to construct a garage. Which is right next to City Hall. And it was a loan program with a twenty year term that would allow for the amount of the loan, which was $2.6 million to be reduced based upon the amount of development, new development and increase in the tax base that Dania Beach had experienced. And as everybody knows, Dania Beach is a growing city and has been successful in having a good, smart development throughout the city and and especially in transportation corridors, which is, I think, important and relevant to this last discussion that we had on the transportation issue. The county did approve an extension on this loan program from twenty years to thirty years. And as the tax base builds, the amount of the loan decreases. So it is going from $2.6 million to $500,000. And I'm quite confident that over the extension of the loan period. It will be reduced to zero and it will be a complete grant for the construction of that garage. So congratulations, Commissioners. On some smart development decisions that you have made. I want to talk a little bit about vaccinations. We are ramping up the vaccinations against the COVID nineteen. And are now have the capacity to vaccinate about ten thousand persons in Broward per day. And vaccination sites, you can find them on the website for Broward County, which is broward.org. Or if you have any questions, you can always call my county commission office. Nine five four three five seven seven zero zero seven. We're now offering at home vaccinations for persons who are not able to get to a vaccination site. If you want to schedule an at home vaccination, call eight six six seven seven nine six one two one. And again, call my county commission office if there are any questions on that. The Coastal Lake, we will be having a an update later this week. And the Coastal Lake is a proposal to run commuter rail that we currently run on the Western Railroad tracks. On the seaboard coastline tracks to run a parallel commuter rail on the FEC railroad tracks, the eastern tracks that run adjacent to City Hall. And one of the sites that could be a station is right by City Hall. And in fact, it's just one block to the north of City Hall. It's in competition with other sites and the decision will be made based upon a federal study. Because we expect to have federal capital funding for the Coastal Lake and it will be a wonderful transportation alternative. I mean, we just had a presentation by Stuart Robertson. On some of the challenges that Dania Beach and Broward County in general, we experience with traffic congestion. And this will be one way that we can ease traffic congestion on the north, south route. And on that transportation issue, I know that Commissioner Otman, you had asked some questions regarding perhaps some kind of shuttle service. And let me suggest that you contact Jason in my office, my chief of staff. And we'll meet with our transportation consultants because we do have, as you well know, the Penny Surtax funding and there are, there's a process by which cities can make requests for for funding for municipal projects. And we do have enhanced shuttle service as part of the the overall transportation plan, which is available to all the cities. But with the unique situation that we have in Dania Beach, especially how we're seeing more and more development on the transportation corridors. You may have a set of factors that would would bode well for a, you know, a project that would be that would concentrate on on Dania Beach. So one quick note on the nine one one emergency communications system, we are now up and running. And much improved communications when a person calls. For any type of a nine one one emergency, whether it's medical, fire or otherwise. We have an integrated system with, right now, we have fifteen towers throughout the county that are connected to to provide for better communication from call intake to our emergency responders. And also there now is available the ability, you can text nine one one and communicate whatever emergency you are experiencing. So the sixteenth tower that had some controversy with the city of Hollywood is now, it's going to be on the agenda for next Tuesday. For a an agreement between Hollywood and Broward County for placement of that sixteenth tower, which is important, especially for the residents of Southeast Dania Beach that will be very close to that sixteenth tower to ensure that they have the the best reception on the nine one one system. We have some good news out of the airport. We have now had an increase in the number of inplanements. Which means that we are getting close to the numbers that we had coming in and out of the airport of pre COVID nineteen. That bodes well for one economic development project in the city over at Dania Point. The county in conjunction with the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance and the city of Dania Beach had put together some incentive funds for Spirit Airlines to move their corporate headquarters over to Dania Point as part of a larger expansion of a training facility and related services for Spirit Airlines. Of course, we had that bump in the road, but based upon the the numbers that we're seeing for getting back to full capacity at the airport. We are going to be, or Spirit tells us they'll be moving forward with their development plans. Which I know a number of the city commissioners had been very, very interested in because of the certainty that there will be hundreds of jobs that will be generated, that'll be high paying jobs available for local residents. And with that, I think that covers the issues that I wanted to speak to. If you have any questions, fine, but I know you have a large agenda. So I thought just a very brief, as I promised, a brief briefing would be in order. So Mayor, if you want to entertain any questions, fine. Otherwise, you can just move on to the next item.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Ryan. Is there anyone that has any questions? I see none. All right. You have a great evening and thank you for stopping by. You're always welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll have Ms. Latima King from Career Source Broward. She is going to answer the questions that I know that some of you all had about the summer job program that I gave you information on at the last commission meeting. I know the vice mayor and Commissioner Davis had some questions, so she is here to answer those questions. Who wants to go first? Vice Mayor, what questions did you have? There you go.
Okay, well, I was, I guess, had wanted to know how that worked to begin with, whether the pay job, whether the, we were trying to talk about the people that were they going to be city of Dania Beach residents. Just some of the basic stuff like that, that I'm sure Commissioner Davis will add to that.
Oh, I think one of the, I couldn't hardly understand you, but I think one of your questions from the last meeting was what types of jobs will our residents have? Like, how would they match them up with the type of jobs?
Right. Well, yes, you're right, Mayor. And the concern is, I think we're talking about some of the age levels as well. And we were talking about, you know, a lot of the businesses and the liabilities of hiring children that were between, I guess, sixteen and eighteen or fourteen to sixteen. I think we had talked about different levels of age going in there. And then what jobs would be offered to them? And then have we, were we able to secure any of the businesses in our city that would that would be willing to take them on to put them to work? And then also some things in the meantime, you know, we could probably have included, you know, some college students to this as well. So, you know, just a little, I guess, maybe just bring us up the date on what you can offer and what's going on so we can get the information. Okay, there.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, good evening. I'm Latima King. I'm the program manager for the summer youth employment program. And our program is for ages sixteen to eighteen only. And forgive me if I don't answer all the questions. I was trying to gather all of them. I think I heard one question as far as if these students would be Dania Beach residents and yes, they would be Dania Beach residents. And then I think I heard another question about the jobs. When I initially had a meeting, had the meeting with Mayor James and I forget the other two that were present on the phone call. We spoke about the job situation and the types of jobs that the youth can do. And the basic jobs that the youth normally do in some of the other areas are clerical and camp counselor aides and childcare assistants. Jobs in that nature. But what our program, what we're really trying to do is match the youth to their career choice. So if they do have an idea of the direction that they want to go in when they do graduate. And we have those opportunities in the area of where they live, we try to match them to that industry as much as possible. Now, of course, if we have a youth that wants to be a doctor. We're not going to put them in a hospital and expect them to do exactly what the doctors are doing. But it's our hope that we can put them in a medical facility. And they work around the medical assistants, the nurses, and they can get to get the experience as to what they do. And by the end of the summer, they can really make a choice as to whether or not this is a career path they want to go down or not. What they would do at that medical facility is probably come in contact with the clients that come in. Register them, answer the phones, make appointments and that sort of thing. They will not do anything medically because of course you need to be trained in that aspect. Forgive me if I didn't answer another question, but those are the questions that I heard.
That's a start. I'll let some of the other commissioners, I'm writing some notes down and then I let them go and involve themselves and then I will get back with you in a minute. Okay?
Okay.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming to answer some questions. I did get some of them answered from what you've just previously stated. My, one of my major concerns is that this is a three thousand dollar per child expense. And I'm all for supporting youth getting summer jobs and, and fostering a, a passion that they have into a career that, that they want to go into. I think that aspect is really wonderful. What I'm trying to do is justify spending twenty thousand dollars on just seven children. I like to maximize, I would like to be able to see a, a maximum of what the benefits are going to be for three thousand dollars a child. If they're just going in to do clerical work, what is the follow-up? What is like, you know, I guess what the service is that is, is, is that, that, that you're providing them that they wouldn't just go into and do on their own, I guess, the additional benefits of the program as far as are you providing evaluation results from the results of the program? So I, I guess I'm looking for some more statistics or data that, that goes with the cost of the program other than just finding them placement into a career choice that they would like to have.
Well, we did provide a estimate as to the breakdown of what the cost is per, per youth and what the cost goes to. We do provide three days of employability skills before they are assigned to their work site. And with those three days of employability skills, we do have to lease a facility to offer those three days. They do get paid for those three days. And during those three days of employability skills, we focus on soft, the basic soft skills. So we're introducing ninety percent, if not ninety-five percent of the youth that participate in this program. This is their first time working. And we are targeting low-income families. And with some of the statistics from just years and years of providing a summer program, it has shown that, you know, a lot of youth in that community, low-income community, they do have a hard time finding jobs or even knowing the first thing about searching, doing job search. So we're providing that information to them. We're giving them the knowledge of why is important to arrive on time to work? Why is important to dress appropriate for your position? What is appropriate for certain positions in a workplace? How to speak with your supervisor? How to get along with your coworkers? Where, and, and we go a step further with introducing financial literacy. A lot of youth, they don't know how to read their paycheck. They don't know why they take taxes out of their paycheck, and where does that go? They don't know how to budget. They don't know about credit. So we provide that aspect. And then we also provide workplace safety. We have an OSHA representative that comes out, talks about work safe placing, safety, as well as because some of our positions are working outside in the heat, we're in South Florida. We, they provide safety, heat safety as well. And we provide that to our supervisors, our workplace, our work sites as well, and our monitors. We also hire work site monitors that go out to each work site. And they provide technical assistance to the work site supervisor as well as the youth. So if the work site supervisor may have some concerns about the youth, maybe the youth is arriving late or is very, very shy and not asking the right questions in order to do their job, then they will talk to the work site monitor, and then the monitor will talk with the youth to try to help the youth out. We want the youth to be successful in any position that they are in. And over the years, some of, of the positions that have come on outside of just clerical and camp counselor, we have a marketing assistant, we have graphic design assistant. And all these positions are just assistant-type positions. They're not filling a spot, a, a vacant spot at a business. So if someone does have a vacancy for a graphic designer, our youth cannot just fill that spot. Our youth are learning. We view this program as a training, learning program because most of the youth, this is their first time learning. And we do have some youth with learning disabilities. We have some youth with autism. We have youth with physical disabilities. So basically, we take everyone, and we want to provide this opportunity to everyone, especially the ones that may have a little bit harder time, harder time doing job search and getting a job. So basically, they get, they get selected for our program, they participate in our program, they are able to put a resume together by the end of the program and list the work site that they work at. They get thirty hours a week, they get paid minimum wage. And because we are dealing with high school students, just them staying in school and having a better direction about their future is a, a success for us. We're not looking for the youth to obtain a, a part-time job or a full-time job at the end of the summer. If that happens, that's great. But we're looking at success as you came into the program on one level and you're leaving the program with some hard skills and soft skills that you didn't have in the beginning. And now you're a little bit more confident to go out and get your own job where you didn't have that confidence or those abilities or skills to do it on your own.
Thank you. And my last thing, I'm sorry, I know other people might have something, but this is my last one. But thank you for that comprehensive answer. I really do appreciate it. But I, I did like that you talked about helping, you know, some of the most vulnerable in our population. And I think that, I don't know if this is with the manager or the mayor or who, whoever, or maybe it's you, but the funds that would be used to sponsor these particular students that they have to demonstrate that they have been impacted by the pandemic. So is that, is that something that is an issue?
Let me clarify that. That's something that I think Frank and maybe the city manager was on the call. I can't remember everyone that was on the call, but that is a way that we can try and go and get some reimbursement, but that has nothing to do with Ms. Latima King. That would be on our end trying to recruit money if, if possible. I mean, I, I think that would be a win-win if we can, you know, invest in our youth, that's one thing. But then to be able to have an opportunity, if, if we found out that some of those youth, you know, were impacted by COVID, that the city could recoup those funds back.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Oh, okay.
I'll just go back to my, my last questions and whoever else wants to go. Three things you said on there, and one of them is like a iffy thing. I know that we're having a camp at ours, at our parks for the summer. And we are already, I believe we are already paying them out of our pocket, the, the helps, the young kids that help out there, I think. That's something I'm, as part of this question, when we started talking about camp counselors, I may be wrong. The other thing was, is that you hire, you want to hire seven, but you said that it's, one minute you said it's open to everybody, but then the next minute you said it's lower income. So that kind of concerned me a little bit. I mean, there's a, a child out there that, how do you pick these children out to qualify for the programs? Whether they have the ability to, you know, not need funding or whether, you know, or their home life is a little better. But they're also in a direction with the career as well. They might have an ambition. The other thing is, is that, you know, when you're talking about the person, the, the monitor that goes out there, I think this is my, my biggest concern is that when you go out to the job as a sixteen and eighteen-year-old, and the reason I bring this question up is because I've hired sixteen-year-olds at my store, and I've hired up sixteen and seventeen right out of South Broward High School. And I've learned that the dependability on them asking for a job is like fifty-fifty. Some have turned out to be excellent, and some of my stars, and they've, they've gone to college and made something of themselves. Obviously, not my business, but, but to do that. The other thing is, is that some of, you know, they call in sick, they didn't show up for work. So the monitors, when they do this thing, and, and I think Commissioner Davis just said, or, uh, uh, in regards to that if they, if the COVID had come there or reimbursement to the city, whatever, if we find out on our own, if once you, once if we should, if we should go with this, and the, the fun is there, and we go to the seven places that are employed and talk to the owners, and they say it's just not working out, then what happens?
Well, we can guarantee that the youth that we place at any of our work sites are going to be stellar employees. Again, they're, this is their first time working. They're just getting their feet wet, so they're learning.
You know, dependability showing up, doing, you know, respectful things at that site.
Again, we can't guarantee that. All we can do is introduce the soft, basic soft skills during those three days and discuss to them and role-play with them the importance of showing up to work, being dependable, being reliable. Everybody is different. If we place a youth at a work site and they're just not working out, that's why the monitor is there. There may be other factors going on in the home or with that youth that may make that youth not dependable or reliable. Maybe the youth started off going to work on time and because the mom or the dad or aunt uncle was taking them to work in the car and the car broke down, and the youth is not comfortable telling the supervisor, hey, I'm having difficulty coming to work. The, the monitor is there, the, the, the youth will talk to the monitor or the supervisor. The monitor will find out, okay, what's going on? How can we help you? If it's a transportation situation, we can offer a bus pass to that youth. If it's a clothing situation, we can offer a, a clothing voucher to that youth so that they can get the proper clothes for the position. If it continues and it doesn't get, get better, then unfortunately, the youth may get terminated. And if the youth gets terminated, the youth is terminated from the program. Again, this is an opportunity for the youth to learn. And sometimes the learning experience may end in termination. We don't want that. That's why we have the monitors there to try to intervene if they see something or they're told something by the supervisor, hey, this may be a problem, this is what's going on. The monitor can intervene and kind of find out what's happening and, and try to rectify the situation before the situation gets worse. And I didn't quite hear the first thing you were saying about the income. Cause you were going.
Yeah, I was talking about the summer programs that we have in our parks. I think that we hire part-time from the schools, our high schools maybe to do that, maybe entirely different. But the thing is, when you mentioned about being a, a summertime council or something like that, I just don't want the, the cross path. I, I'm, I'm gonna leave it with one, one final thing that I want, I'm not gonna drag it out. You know, when you, when you punch a clock and you go to work, you get paid for work. And my point to you is that if something doesn't work, and I, and I understand where we're going with this, but if the person doesn't work, it's whether the first week or so on, and the, and, and our two weeks, and we, and the three thousand dollars is there, why wouldn't you refund back the city if it's unused money? That's where I'm concerned. If the kid goes, learns it, does it three months, I'm more leaning towards that. But if they, if I don't, you didn't say, like, if they don't show up for work, we still lose the money. That's where I'd have a problem with.
Well, I, I don't think I said that we would keep the money. Basically, everything would be laid out in the contract. And how we have with our other providers, like the city of Fort Lauderdale, it's on a reimbursement. So if the youth only worked a week, the youth is only getting paid a week, we, we will be reimbursed for that week that we paid the youth. And we will not, you know, require you to give us full eight weeks for a youth that didn't work. Majority of the money that we receive from any of our funders, it goes directly to the youth. We're not, you know, trying to hold on to anything. We want the funding to go directly to the youth so that they can, you know, save their money, buy the, the, the items that they need for college or for school or help out their families. And, you know, from researching, you know, I've been with the program for ten years now. A lot of these youth, they look forward to working during the summer because they do help their families out. And they use their money for, for school, either going off to college or, you know, providing their clothing and, and supplies for a high school.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yeah, I, most of my questions were answered, actually. But I, just one quick question. Is there a way that you would be able to, or that the program would be able to identify for us those students that are impacted, their families have been impacted by COVID? Or, I mean, is that something that we're gonna do a separate questionnaire or something for each of the individual students?
Well, we don't currently ask that question, but again, if this is something that you, the city of Dania would like to move forward with, I would think that, you know, some negotiation will happen with the contract. And if you want some sort of question and answering or survey or something like that to be posed, then I, I don't see us having a problem doing, doing so.
I, I just think it's something that might end up being needed if we're, if we're gonna try to get reimbursed for that. So that's, I, I'm just trying to figure out where it's gonna come from because once that they're in the program, it would likely be too late for us to do anything about that. That's why I'm trying to find out. And I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on, you said that there's, these individuals are being paid minimum wage? Cause I think the last time that we heard about this, that the amount was higher than that, that I just want to make sure that we don't have untrained, unskilled individuals being paid like nine or ten dollars an hour when minimum wage is lower than that. Cause you might be working at the same place, doing the same job, getting paid less than, than the students are who have no experience. That's, that's why I'm trying to.
No, all the youth in the program gets paid minimum wage.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a note, I'm, I'm looking at myself. I'm not looking at the person talking.
Just to recap, I knew that we still would have to do a contract. And so that's when I would have, obviously, our Frank and our city manager, who will be a part of that contract, be able to ask those questions about COVID to see if we can seek reimbursement. But other than that, does anyone else have any questions or Ms. Latima King?
Kind of do. Just one more quick question. Sorry.
Before you do your question, I, go ahead, go ahead, cause I have to repeat it.
I, I think it should be simple enough. I mean, it's only because I have, I have a program and it's really good. And I, and I really stressed at the beginning of the program, the attendance policy. If somebody else is paying for you to be in a program, you really need to understand that your job is to show up. And so we have a specific attendance policy that says, you know, you have to show up. Somebody else is investing in you. Somebody else believes in you. And so if you don't, you have, during this eight weeks, we expect you to show up ninety percent of the time, whatever, you know, is acceptable. So I'm just wondering how strong you reiterate that to your kids in your program.
Oh, during our interview process, we, we state that to them. And we also ask them if they have anything going on during the summer that may prevent them from working the full eight weeks. Because some of the youth may have college tours, some of the youth may have cheerleading camp or football camp. And if it lasts, if, if it takes them away more than three days, then it's a problem. And we let them know upfront, you may not be able to participate in the program because this is a short program and the employees are expecting you to work the full eight weeks. So we tell them upfront. And then we have a document called the disciplinary contract. In that contract, it states you cannot miss more than three days. If you miss more than three days, you will be terminated from the program. Now, we do take things on a case-by-case basis because if a youth gets sick, that's out of our control. And I'm not gonna say, oh, you've been sick more than three days, you're terminated from the program, you know?
Unexcused absence type of thing. You just didn't show up because you didn't feel like going that day. That's one thing you.
Exactly. Or if you're not showing up and you're not calling, you're not calling us to let us know, hey, you know, I went to the emergency room last night, I couldn't show up, that, that's. You know, I went to the emergency room last night, I couldn't show up, that, that's a problem. Um, but, but we, we are very, very clear and upfront. With all the youth that are, um, accepted into the program. And with their parents, the ones that are under eighteen years old, the parents are there, we require the parents to be. There during the interview so that they can hear exactly what we are telling the youth. We do have some households where the parent is a single parent and they want their youth to work, but at the same time, their youth is a babysitter. So we're making it very clear, you're gonna have to find a way, because this youth, these are real jobs. And they're being put into real places of work. It's not play-play, so these employers are expecting these youth to do a job, to show up. And put forth their best effort, we make that very clear.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, um, Ms. Latima, I, I don't have the paper in front of me.
And I just wanna say I'm sorry, I, I run a very, very good program too.
Um, I, I believe it was around twenty-something applicants that applied from Dania Beach for this program. And I, I do believe, um, only seven was left out due to funding. And that's why I, I was bringing this seven to the commission, so they can to be included. Because that will make every single app- applicant that has applied for this youth summer program. To be, um, funded and paid for, because we already have a number that has been paid for. By, uh, CSC and other funding partners that they have, there's only seven left. Um, that have not been funded, so again, that was my reasoning for coming here. And I did also speak about, maybe i- if this worked out well as a pilot, um, in the future, we can do a match. Um, so we can ensure that all of our youth have a summer program. Yeah, are there any other questions? All right, Ms. Latima, thank you so much, I'll get back with you.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Okay, so, um, now it's our, we have to make a decision. I am obviously looking for support for this program, I feel like it's a win-win for our city, um, it gives our youth. Not to have idle minds and, and, you know, understanding what comes with responsibility of obtaining a job. Um, from sixteen to eighteen, that's a very crucial state to where you could be charged as an adult, if you get into the wrong types of activities. I think that it shows investment in our youth, and I just think it's a great program, there are a lot of cities that are partnering, that's, that's why I should have asked her. There are a lot of cities that, that do this with Career Source Broward, and I wanted us to be a part of that, so I am looking for the support on it. Yes, Vice Mayor? You're muted, I, you're still muted.
I'm unmuted.
Okay.
You know, I understand everything you're looking for on here, and I, and it's always good to help out the young, uh, people to get a start in life. I think, um, I'm concerned, uh, you know, I mean, there's, and I know that you wanted all of them in there and so on. Uh, I'd like to see, you know, if, if, if there's a support for this, I'd like to see, you know, where the jobs are at Dania Beach. And I'd like to know, I'd like to see a list of the kids that are involved, is, is that possible? I mean, are we allowed to do that? Because I just have a, you know, I've experienced sixteen to eighteen-year-olds, and that's my only, um. That's my only concern is of the dependability of this, and then, you know, I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, a- as far as support goes to it, I mean, it'd be up to the commission. But I just want to, um, I just, I, I just think the program is, is a little leery for me, but I'm not, I'm not against it. You see what I'm saying, I just wanna make sure that if they show up, they do their job, then it's a good, it's a good thing, if they don't, I just don't want the city to, to. Be costing the city, uh, twenty thousand dollars for them to think it's, uh, the kids think it's a joke, that's all.
I, I understand that, and it made me feel more comfortable when she said if they, you know, if they are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, that we wouldn't have to pay for that. So it's not just, um, we say yes, and we just automatically, you know, can't get our money back, if they, if. That's with anybody, I've, I've had, um, youth go through my program and get jobs at the quarter deck, and, and some, some were down and some didn't. Um, but those who don't, we won't have to pay for that.
Okay, as long as it includes all twenty people, all twenty children, and the, um, and then it's any of the, any of the seven back out. That would be what I'd be looking for, not just the seven we're supporting.
No, all, a- all of the, okay, so it was a, I don't have the exact number, sorry, so I'll just use twenty-nine. If there were twenty-nine kids, um, that applied, they only had enough funding for twenty-two of those kids. And seven were left out, that's why I brought seven.
What I'm, I understand that, and what I'm saying is that, that the twenty-nine are there, and seven, any seven drop out, not the money you're putting in to help the seven. But any of the twenty-nine dropout, that should go back to us.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, okay.
Cause I mean, the odds go better that if, if something happens, now the twenty-nine, not out of the seven. Okay? I'm done, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Otman?
Okay, um, yeah, no, I, I, I mean, uh, Ms. King, I think was her, her name. I, I, uh, can you hear me okay? You look like you're reading it.
Yeah, I can hear you better now.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, you know, this, this, this sounded like a woman that, uh, had, uh. Clearly kno- knows how to run this program, and I, I, I have confidence in her. You know, a- ability for the accountability of, of these youths, and she was able to answer those questions. Uh, far beyond, uh, any of the concerns that, that I had. So I think it's a great program, and I hope that the, all twenty-nine or however many, uh, kids there are, are successful, so it has my support.
Thank you. Um, any, Commissioner Davis?
Last question, have these seven kids who have been left out, have they already been interviewed and approved by Ms. King? That they would be eligible for this particular program, or they have, they would still have to go through the interview process?
Um, well, the, I, I can't answer part of that question, the only part that I do know is that it hasn't happened yet. Where, where they have done the training yet, that happens, I think she said the day after the last day of school. So they won't be working while they're in school, but soon as school is, I think, city manager, was that correct?
That, that is correct, Mayor, and, um, so these seven kids will still have ample time to be able to get in the, in the training for the, for the program. And I just, you know, I was talking to Frank, you know, if some of the kids have been affected by COVID, we can get reimbursed. But if some of them are of low income anyway, they could benefit from the program. And you, you have approximately two hundred thousand dollars in commission contingency. And you really have made June, July, August and September, so this twenty-one thousand would be a good investment, particularly. Um, with all the criteria that Ms. King has explained.
I, the only part of that I couldn't answer, thank you, um, city manager, the only part of that I could not answer is if, what part have they already been through? Cause I didn't ask her that question, but I don't know if, I know that they have applied, I am not sure that they have gone through a specific interview process. I wouldn't think that they've gone through an interview process if they didn't have the funding, but I don't, I don't know that. Tom, do we need a motion in a second, or do, or just consensus? You're muted.
If you're gonna want to spend money, you're gonna have to allocate money that Frank will have to find, but I guess a motion would be appropriate.
Okay, so, um, so I need a motion, so it would be, um, a motion to. Um, approve the summer youth program that was presented to the seven, um, youths. And the money's being taken from our contingency, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, that's my motion, yes.
I'll make a motion, pass it.
Okay, a second, um, on the roll, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't find my button, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodman? Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, and now we will have, um, our HR director. Who will introduce us to a new member of our team and of her team, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and, uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney. Um, I'm Linda Gonzalez, the HR Director, and on behalf of the whole HR team. I would like to really just say thank you to the mayor and commission for allowing us to add a fantastic new team member. And tonight with us is Ms. Jenny Flores Ortiz. And she comes to us as a former teacher, and also with over ten years of HR experience. And she's gonna be focusing on training, organizational development and talent acquisition. And we're very happy she's here, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jenny.
Hi, good evening, everyone, I am Jenny Flores Ortiz, I am so happy to have joined the city and a fantastic HR team. Uh, as Linda mentioned, I will be focusing on training, organization development and recruitment. And we have already started some of our new initiatives, and I just look forward to contributing to the HR team and to be a part of the city's success. Thank you.
Welcome here.
Yes, welcome. Thank you, um, next, we have a special event request by Mr. Leroy Green. To have a fruit and vegetable stand every Friday and Saturday beginning April thirtieth. At the Bacon Lot on the corner of Northwest Fifth Avenue, Northwest First Street, Community Development, we have any issues with this? Hi Eleanor, do we have any issues with this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This item is a special event request approval by Mr. Leroy Green to have a fruit and vegetable stand. Uh, Friday and Saturday from nine AM to five PM. It's, the request is, um, for a bacon lot on Northwest Fifth Avenue and Northwest First Street. The application did not meet the criteria for administrative review and approval, because the event is requested for consecutive multi-day events. The application was routed to all required departments, um, for review, based on the comments received. The department is recommending denial of this application, as it does not meet the city's code. The event, proposed event is not located on developed property with an active BTR, or not held on the city-owned property. Or on, associated with a place of worship. Thank you.
Are we voting, Mayor?
Yes, but I have a few questions, because I'm really confused, because, um, those of you who don't know the history behind Mr. Leroy Green, he's in his eighties. And he's had this fruit and vegetable stand, um, on, on the land, I think is, uh. Al Jones Brothers land for over thirty years, he hasn't had an issue, there hasn't been one issue there. Um, he has permission from the property owner, he also, uh, had a letter written from the church, which he's doing it under. And I did not know, um, that there were additional issues, I do know that because he didn't have a. He didn't have a, a BTR, I believe, but he is doing it through a nonprofit. Um, this isn't something that, that gains a lot of financial gain from him, it is his life. Um, he's been doing it, like I said, almost thirty years, he's in his mid to late eighties. Um, I didn't, I didn't even know that this was going to have to come to the commission, because what I thought, that it did not need to come to the commission. But, um, seeing as if it did, I thought that, uh, all of the comments. Eleanor, weren't most of the comments that they didn't have any issues with it?
That's correct, the comments received from legal was that it's not a permitted use by the city code, and zoning also provided that same comment.
What?
Recommendation was for denial.
Okay, what about, um, fi- didn't it go to fire and other departments?
Yes, it went to all the other required departments, um, and all other departments had no issues with the application.
Okay, so there's no issue other than the fact that it doesn't look like a standard operation as one would, correct?
Right, it doesn't meet the city's code for special events, currently.
Okay, well, I, I would like to grant it to him, I pass by there all the time, there's not a big gathering there. There hasn't been one incident there, um. He's, he's, this is his life, so I, I know that it's not the city code, but I also know that we have the power. To do what's right in cer- certain instances, and we have the discretion, so Mr. Leroy has my support. He's, he has come back from a heart attack, and this is helping him stay alive, so I, not. You say, excuse me?
You need a motion?
Um, no, I, well, no, I think we just need to know consensus, Tom?
No, you would need a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Then I'd like to make, uh, a motion to, would it be, cause it's, it's a denial, so how would I word it, Tom? Cause I wanna approve the, him to be able to do it.
You can just, just say what you wanna say, and if you say to approve, then that's what they'll vote on.
Motion to approve to allow the applicant to, um, have his fruit and vegetable stand. At the locations, uh, indicated.
Yes, um, Commissioner Llewellyn?
I just have a question, I, I know Mr. Green, I, I pass by there quite a bit myself, and I see him there all the time. Uh, I think I see him there, other than Fridays and Saturdays as well, I've seen him there other days also. Do we know where he gets his fruits and vegetables from? I mean, that's, that's more of an issue for me, I just, I mean, there's, there's standards, there's, you know. Like the patch, when they sell their products, you have to, you know, there's certain things that they have to do as well, so I just, it's. That's, that's my concern, is where, where is it coming from?
I don't know the, um, the place specifically, uh, the name specifically, but he, he gets it from a, a, a farm. Somewhere in Miami, I think he had told me once before, because he's helped me, um, get some of my. He had the best collard greens in town, his collard greens are better than the collard greens at, um, farmer's market, so. Uh, all I can do is vouch for the collard greens, because, uh, when I was in a buying this last Thanksgiving drive. He came and opened up that truck and gave us all of his fresh collard greens, and, and they were big, beautiful, and they taste good. So I, I, I don't, he's not here to, to answer that for you, but I don't, so I don't know that.
Does Eleanor know, he, I mean, since the application went through the city, I'm just wondering if you have any idea?
Did not provide that information to us.
Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
I just wanna reiterate the two, the two entities, it does not meet the code and it does not meet legal requirements, is that correct?
A legal's comment was it does not meet the city's code for special events, so that's the only issue.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, you know, a couple of things, uh, is this a one-weekend-only thing, or is this every weekend of every? Uh, every weekend come up in the future?
He's been there every weekend, uh, for the past thirty years, and I don't know, somebody must've got mad and complained, and this is where it came from. So for the last thirty years, he's been there every weekend, so that.
Well, if he, if he was to, um, I understand that, and, and I, and I understand the, the thing too, is that. You know, every business is out there that has to pay, you know, the BTR for what they're doing. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, there's also when you start selling, uh, vegetables or any type of entity out there, you, you know, there's a food regulation that's involved. If something is wrong, he's got, set the site on his stuff, somebody gets sick, uh, you know, is, is, who's gonna be responsible for it? I mean, why can't he do the few things that need to be done, and if he's got permission from the landowner? Uh, the, you know, the BTR and, and the things that need to be passed, like any other business, why won't he do that?
Okay, well, I, I tried to help Mr. Green go through the process, and, um, everything that they asked for. We gave to the city, so, um, he went through a nonprofit, um, that was asked for, they, they wanted the church to write a letter. He gave them that, I mean, he gave, he gave them everything that the city asked for, so that's.
You know, why was it denied?
Um, my guess is as good as yours, because like I said, we went through the process with Mr. Leroy to try and get him, um, up to do this. And I did not know that it was going to be denied until right now.
Well, I think, I think I'd make a suggestion, that I would, uh, before it gets denied or approved, I don't know which way it's gonna go, but maybe. We should look into why it got denied and see if we can move further with it, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not against anybody wanting to do business, I'm just afraid. And it warms, cause if there's a complaintee, then it's not gonna stop there, they're gonna come back and say, why are they getting away with it? So there's, you know, other issues that involve, I mean, uh, I, I don't know, I'm just, I, I want the guy to be able to do business, I think it should be performed with it, in a business like Mayor, that's all.
Eleanor?
Yes, so the reason the application was denied, it does not meet city code because the event is not located on a developed property with an active BTR or held on city-owned property or associated with a place of worship. It needs to be one of those three things along with the letter from the nonprofit and the letter from the property owner were required.
Commissioner Davis?
I would like to see, be, see us be able to support him in getting up to code and getting the, the proper documents that he needs. It seems that if he, if he had a letter from a church, would that be sufficient?
They have that.
What, was that a, a, a letter or what was the support element from the religious organization, Eleanor?
Um, the letter of support states that he provides charitable contribution to the organization indicated. It's the Greater Mount Pleasant African Methodist Ep- Ep- Episcopal Church.
Episcopal. All good.
But he provided that, so he meets half of the criteria. It's the first half, so it's not an, he must meet either undeveloped property with an active BTR, on city-owned property or a place of worship and be associated with the charitable organization. And he only meets half of that requirement. Because the lot that he's utilizing, Mr. Milton Jones provided, is a vacant lot. It's not developed.
Um, Commissioner Oddman?
So if he, if he was making a donation, he would be in compliance, Eleanor?
I'm sorry?
Making, um, if he, there was charitable donation involved on his end, would he be in compliance?
No, that's how he's meeting half of the requirement. He's already meeting that part by providing the charitable donation to the church and the, and the letter from the church is providing that. It's the other half of the requirement that he doesn't meet, which is either being held on, either being held on a developed property with an active BTR or on city-owned property or associated with a place of worship.
Oh, okay, associated with a place of worship, meet, he's not associated with a place of worship by having the letter?
I would defer to Tom on that.
Again, it's, it's two parts. See, there has got developed property, so the ten is, it's supposed to be like a paved surface. There's parking, there's bathrooms for people to use. And in fact, about 10 years ago, this did come up. There was a fruit and vegetable stand and an ordinance was created for that store called the 911 Store, the Publix on East Dania Beach Boulevard. That was occupied and the ordinance was designed to accommodate somebody like this gentleman who needed to be, requested to be accommodated. So if he, if he can work with, let's say the new 7-Eleven that's on the nearby street and work off that property, this would be fine. I don't know if they would do that, but that would be a way to make it legal. That's the important, important point. And you also don't want to have a, an issue where this becomes an issue where other people say, well, how about me too? That's part of the problem. So he does not comply with the ordinance about being on a developed property. He gives, he gives 10% of his, he, his tithing is what they said, of his income. But that is not really what the ordinance is talking about. It talks about must benefit a not-for-profit entity or charitable organization. I guess you could say it does benefit it to the 10% of its sales. That's the issue. It, it has a problem there.
Okay, so if.
Wait, I, I wasn't done with my question, Mayor. So would this also, like if you were to, um, try and have a, like a lemonade stand, let's say, would this fall under the same kind of problem?
Yes, I guess it would, you know, you can't have it on a vacant piece of property. Again, if a lemonade stands, it's usually on somebody's house and they have parking and they have bathrooms and people eat their bread.
And it's not every weekend for two days, Friday and Saturday. That's what also triggers.
This is, as long as he can afford to, you know, handle to do it.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
How about, why can't, I, I caught one of the things that Eleanor said about a city-owned lot. Why can't we take one of those undersized lots that are the CRA and let him do that, that he'd meet all the criteria?
Um.
Is that right, Tom?
I don't think that's gonna be vacant. So you want us to give him the lot because?
No, he, no, he could, I mean, so she says the city-owned lot and we have, I think, four or five of those undersized lots that are not really buildable in the city that we, the CRA has. Why can't we, if it's on a city-owned property, I think Eleanor said, why can't he go to that lot? Then he meets the criteria that Eleanor is requesting. He can get a BTR at that point if he needs it with that, then everything is resolved. If, because there's, because other than that, we're, we're asking to break the rules of our, of our code and I, I have an issue with that.
I have a quick question. As far as, um, breaking the rules, because I thought about this too. When, when we have applicants come for a variance, that's because they don't meet the criteria of the code, correct Eleanor or Tom? I don't know who wants to answer that.
That is correct.
Okay, so we break the rules and we approve it for them, but everyone else still has to come and it's a case-by-case basis?
But, but what must happen is that you must satisfy five or six criteria before you're entitled to seek the variance. So you'll always seem.
Not, that's not it though. Even though you meet certain criterias, it's a certain criteria that you're not meeting that they're coming to get permission for us that is not allowed in the code. I guess that's where I'm, that's where I'm going with this. So we, we break the rules all the time. You understand what I'm saying? When people come for a variance because it's not currently in our code. And we change our code a lot because our code is very antiquated and it's very old and it doesn't fit what a lot of developers really want or the, or the need for them. So I, I don't expect, um, he's probably asleep by now. I, I don't expect him to be here fighting for his stand. It's not like there's long lines or anything of that nature, but we, um, we approve things all the time that are not in our code. We just call them a variance, so I, I, that's, that's the only correlation I wanted to say. I know Commissioner Llewellyn has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and my, I'll tell you what my concern is. Coming from the legal side of it, I, I'm just concerned about setting the precedent because then if you, and I, and I know he's been doing this for years. I understand all that and I appreciate it. I always wave to him when I walk, when I drive by, see him there all the time. Um, and he's a lovely man. I know it means a lot to him, but what about, couldn't we do something? I know Vice Mayor suggested one of the empty lots, but what about doing something with the patch? Could we, can we set something up with him where he teams up with the patch? And he sets it up there because then wouldn't that meet the requirement? Because that is city-owned property. We're already selling things like this anyway and then he can have his own space that maybe we could, I don't know, if we could wave the fee or whatever would need to be done in order to let him continue doing this to help him and to allow him to enjoy himself doing this. I know he enjoys doing it and it would still meet the code. I just, I'm just concerned about setting the precedent and then if we have somebody else that comes along who maybe isn't as sympathetic and then we turn them down and then they say, well, but you went ahead and you allowed this other person to do this. So it's, there's catch 22 here. So I'm just trying to figure out the best way that we can do it to, to work with him and, and also follow the rules. And if we, maybe, like I said, if we could set it up with a patch, if that's, Tom or Elena and Eleanor, is that something that we, that would meet the requirements? If we did something like that?
The, the, the patch is probably owned by the city, but the CRA uses it. Is that right technically? I think so. So yes, as the Vice Mayor's bringing up and you're bringing up, uh, if he's using it on city property and he's tithing to this church, he would probably be able to qualify. That would be a way to do it.
It would be a compromise.
Yeah, but it would meet the code is the question. So we're not running into the precedent, which I, I do have concerns about.
I, I, only reason why I don't have a, a, a concern with the precedent because this is a case-by-case basis and we, we, um, approve variances for some developers and we deny it for others and I, you know, I, I just, this is a matter of, for me, doing what's right. I understand that it doesn't meet the code and a lot of things don't meet the code and we allow them to meet the code. Um, for someone that's been doing this for 30 years and this, and has survived a heart attack, I, you know, I don't have a problem with allowing him to continue doing that and I don't think it sets a precedent because we are verbally saying that this is not something that is going to, you know, we're gonna allow everybody to do a pop-up shop, something like that, but I, I don't know. So I guess it's, we'll, we'll vote it up or vote it down at this point. I don't want to spend, um, 30 minutes on it.
Is there a way to make a motion so that it, to, to, to allow him to continue his stand? If he gets, you know, if he is allowed to be able to meet code within a certain timeframe or if we can do one of the suggestions of Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn or Vice Mayor? I, I really have a problem with denying somebody who's been doing something for 30 years, but I, I, I also have a problem with, with, with circumventing the code and circumventing the law. So I want it to be where at least give him the opportunity to be able to get into code or to be able to, uh, meet the code compliance. Or I, I just don't want to say no to somebody and, and, and have a yes or no. So is there a way to form the motion so that he can continue until he can, you know, get to code or until we can figure out whether he's gonna go to the patch or whether he's gonna, you know, go to another property? I, I, I just didn't want it to be a yes or no motion, so I'm asking if that's possible.
You could defer it for 30 days or 60 days and just not rule on it today and give him that opportunity.
I would prefer to do that.
Motion to continue.
I'd like to vote on it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the item. I hope it does set a precedent and I hope everyone wants to open a fruit and vegetable stand all day long. So I'd love to set the precedent. Uh, yeah, so motion to approve the item. You can just vote it up or down.
I'll, I'll second it. Um, Tom, call the row please.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
No.
Commissioner Oddman?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino? You're muted?
No.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion fails two to three.
Well, he still has the opportunity to work, to find a way under these other circumstances, Mayor. We would try to help him.
You know, um, making him go out and try to form an LLC and then getting.
No, 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 no. No, just, just to fight, again, what happened in this other case is a gentleman, very similar to this fellow, found like a 7-Eleven. He parked on their property, so he had parking for it. It was developed and he just, they used their bathrooms and he just sold his fruit and vegetables from that stand at this little store on, by the Publix. He did it for about three or four years. They don't do it anymore. They, but I would still let him do it if he wanted to do it there. It's the same owners, but that was accommodated for somebody. So we created an ordinance to help the people. That's exactly what we did.
Doesn't seem like it's helping the people.
Well, it did.
Eighty-something year old, uh, that's been there for 30 years. It does not seem like that ordinance helped him at all. It doesn't. I understand that the code is to protect us and protect, um, everyone else, but it, it, it doesn't seem like that ordinance helped him in, in any state shape. It doesn't, so. All right, we'll move on. Proclamations, um, Global Love Day. Whereas the Love Foundation, Inc., a love, I mean, a nonprofit organization has announced Global Love Day to facilitate in establishing love and peace on our planet and whereas Global Love Day will establish a worldwide focus towards unconditionally loving each other as we love ourselves and whereas we are one humanity on this planet and whereas all life is interconnected and interdependent and whereas all share in the universal bond of love and whereas love begins with self-acceptance and forgiveness and whereas with respect and compassion, we embrace diversity. And whereas together we make a difference through love. And whereas the Love Foundation, Inc., invites mankind to declare May 1st, 2021 as Global Love Day. For their forgiveness and unconditional love, Global Love Day will act as a model for all of us to follow each and every day. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2021 as Global Love Day in the City of Dania Beach and invite all citizens to observe this day which honors the public cause for global love, world peace and universal joy. Next, we will have citizens' comments. I know that we have two. Um, and then if anyone else wishes to address the commission, if you could use your raise the hand tool, you will be selected. You will have three minutes. You have to state your name and address for the record. First, we have Rolando El Lane. Actually, I think both of these, both of these that Tom sent us, um, are for the item that is coming up, so.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so I'll save those two. If there's anyone else that wants to address the commission, please raise your hand now. Seeing as there are none, I want to wish our Chief, Chief Pelisar a very happy birthday before he addresses the commission. Um, we would sing for you, but we don't want to break the DA system. So I'll have Chief Pelisar come up first since this is his birthday. There you go. Happy birthday.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you very much. It's, uh, it's very touching when people you care about and respect wish you a happy birthday. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'll start off my report by saying uh, thank you to Sasha Ramos, Cencer and Colin because, uh, they've been very diligent, um, and on the support, uh, for their regi- uh, request for proposals to, uh, work on Station One up, updates and, uh, hardening to Station One when it comes to the grant that we've received so that we can uh, get new windows, get a new generator and get a new roof. Uh, so we're, uh, working on that and I want to personally thank them. The next thing I want to bring up real quick was, um, the Bureau Sheriff's Office, uh, peer counseling. So as most people don't realize, uh, our, our men and women go out in the field and sometimes they have calls that are, are very difficult to handle. And, uh, we have to be prepared to help them mentally and physically, uh, when they run these kind of calls. So we have a, um, uh, Bureau Sheriff's Office has a peer support group and a mental health group that will come out to the stations and will take these, uh, men and women um, from, from the call and meet with them and talk to them so that they can go, go ahead and handle the next call uh, better and be, uh, better prepared to handle all the calls. So, you know, that's a big part of our, our our commitment to, uh, service and to serve our men and women so that they're ready to come res- rescue you. Uh, also been dealing with, um, firefighter, uh, cancer prevention. And, um, basically, uh, the one thing I'll touch on that is, uh, the Bureau Sheriff's Office, we have a, um, a system where we take our firefighters' gear after a fire and, uh, we switch it out and we clean it. And then also, uh, once a year, we go ahead and take all of the gear and uh, we pick it when the crews are going off shift in the morning, we'll take it, check it, make sure there's no issues with it, make sure everything is, um, okay with it. If anything needs to be replaced, it gets replaced. And, um, that's something that takes care of our, our firefighters. So, uh, we're, um, very, uh, I'm very happy that, that we could take care of our, uh, men and women when it comes to that. I'd like to, uh, also tell you that we're gonna be rescheduling another bike class and, uh, I was happy to hear that we have a lot of bike lanes on, on the report earlier and then we have, um, a lot of things when it comes to, uh, bicycle, uh, routes. So, um, with that, our, um, education team will be rescheduling another bike class and I'm gonna try to seek some partners so that we can get some helmets for, for our children and our youth uh, so that they can also participate in the next class. So that'll be, um, I'll try to reschedule it, um, within next month. And lastly, I close with, uh, our call volume. Our call volume this month was, uh, 621 calls. 244 of those calls came from Station 17 and 377 calls came from Station 1. So, uh, we continue to be busy, but, uh, we work hard and our men and women work hard for you. And, uh, I thank you and, um, again, thank you for all the well wishes. Questions?
Yes, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, uh, happy birthday, Chief.
Thank you.
But I, I wanted to ask you, so the, uh, you're, obviously the calls are, are busy. We're getting a lot of calls to both stations. Does, does that thing gonna be trending upward or is it like plateauing at all?
No, it's, 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 it's been trending upward. I mean, uh, during COVID, we were slow for uh, a little bit, but then, yeah, it really never, never let up. So the last few months, like, like I've been reporting, the, the last, uh, three to four months has been just going up and up and up and, um, our Rescue One, like I said, spends 50. And, um, our Rescue One, like I said, spends fifty, fifteen hours out of the day on the average out of the fire station, uh, running calls. So they're gone at the hospital or transporting a patient fifteen hours out of a twenty-four hour day.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that information.
I think Commissioner Davis had her hand up.
I just quickly wanted to say happy birthday, Chief. Thanks for, thank you for coming out, uh, to our Earth Day celebration. But I wanted to know who was responsible for leaving us those cute little Fire Chief lapel pins that we have in our offices. Do you know?
That would be me. It's, uh, so you know, um, Commissioner, our Fire Department, uh, celebrated a, um, another, um, year of being a Class One Fire Department. So what that does is that helps our city, uh, have good insurance ratings. And, uh, we did it. We went from a score of our previous rating, which was a ninety point five to almost a ninety eighth, uh, score. So we're getting better and better. And that's, you know, no thanks, you know, well, thanks, I would say, to the Water Department and different departments. It's not just the Fire Department that does it. We, we're actually the ones that meet with the people when they come. But it's, it's a team effort and this is a city, uh, citywide effort. So, uh, fixing our infrastructure with water and the water mains and the hydrants, i- it's, like I said, it's a team effort. I will not take credit for everything. That, that, you know, this is a whole entire team effort.
Thank you and congratulations on that rating.
Thank you, Chief. Well, I hope you enjoy, um, the rest, the remainder of your birthday.
I will. Thank you.
All right, next we have Captain, oh, he's already on. Captain Marks, how are you?
Good. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Since the last commission meeting, we've responded to one aggravated assault, one aggravated battery, six auto thefts, one burglary business, three burglary conveyances, three burglary residences, one robbery, five thefts, and six shoplifting calls. Since the last commission meeting, we've seen a decrease of four burglary conveyances as compared to the two weeks prior. We've made twenty-four arrests. We arrested a suspect for carrying a concealed weapon when a deputy conducted a traffic stop after he observed the driver removing a magazine from his handgun. A teletype recheck, uh, revealed that the subject did not have a concealed weapons permit and he was arrested. Our neighborhood support unit was able to distribute ten more boxes of food to residents throughout the city. Uh, we did a gas, gas station skimmer check with the Department of Agriculture. And I'm happy to say we did not locate one skimmer at any of our gas stations within our city. I want to thank everybody for coming out and participating in the, the Painting with B S O Autism Awareness Event. Uh, we plan to keep that going. I'm also happy to say that after an extensive investigation and, and many long hours and twenty-four hour days, we were able to arrest, arrest the Goya graffiti subject. Our C I unit and crime suppression team conducted an extensive operational plan in order to locate the subject that was responsible, responsible for the numerous Goya graffiti incidents occurring throughout our city. Due to this operational plan, detectives were able to identify and subsequently arrest the subject. It should be noted that there are other victims of the Goya graffiti taggings and they're coming out by the day. It's believed that the same subject is responsible for all of them. As I said, the investigation is still ongoing and more charges are expected. The damages to just the city of Dania Beach alone are estimated to be over ten thousand dollars. Our commercial vehicle enforcement and motor unit have increased the presence and traffic enforcement in school zones due to, uh, citizen complaints of speeding, in particular along, along Northwest First Street and Northwest Second Street. Our homeless outreach team coordinated with the COSAC Foundation and were able to place one of our chronic homeless females in a temporary shelter with the likelihood she will be going to the Jacksonville area where she will have permanent housing and a fresh start. Our homeless outreach team is also working with, um, one of our homeless males to try to get him into either a temporary shelter or an assisted living facility. It has yet to be determined which avenue would be the best for him. It's a shame we had to cancel our, our Operation Medicine Cabinet last weekend, but just know that we're in the process of scheduling a, a shred-a-thon and Operation Medicine Cabinet in the near future. And I'll keep everybody posted as to when that's going to be. In closing, we got hit last night with several burglaries to boats at a marina. To all of our boat owners, please record your serial numbers to all equipment on your vessel. We're currently reviewing video at this time of the offenses that took place last night. Thank you, and that completes my report.
Listen, I know all of us are so happy that you got that graffiti tagger. He was tagging the city like we're, we're on clearance. We're on clear track, red tag, tag, tag. That's what I thought about when I saw him. Um, so, so thank you, thank you, thank you. That's a huge sigh of relief and I hope he's charged with every single one of them that he deserves. Um, and I have one question, uh, with the shoplifting. Do we, was that happening mostly in Dania Point or do we know what vicinity that was, um, occurring in?
It ranges. A lot of them are at Dania Point. Um, and then a lot of them are like the Dollar General and Publix's.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. Anyone else have anything to add? No? Thank you, Captain Marks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next we have the consent agenda. Do we have any polls?
I'm going to have to read an ordinance, Mayor.
All right, seven point seven. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, amending chapter twenty entitled Police of the City's Code of Ordinances, Article Four, entitled Record and Towing Services to amend and update the towing code requirements to be consistent with state and county requirements, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, further providing for an effective date. It's the first reading of this ordinance.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda, including the ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Mine.
Opposed.
Right. Bits and request proposals out of eight point one.
The resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, authorizing the ranking of consulting firms that responded to requests for qualifications RFQ number twenty-one dash oh oh one, professional architectural services for the historic neighborhood Swanson House and the Women's Club, and selecting vendor and associates architects P A as the first ranked firm, writing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date.
Okay, we have a bid. Do we have any issues or any comments or emotion?
Make a motion, Mayor. Pass it.
Second. All in favor?
Anyone opposed? Eight, nine point one?
Nine items are quasi judicial hearings, meaning you'll be serving and sitting as basically judges on these different zoning matters. Anybody who's been contacted either for or against, uh, like property owners or applicants would please disclose that as they call them. And then we will take oaths, of course, of the, uh, people who are going to be testifying, including staff. The first two are related, so I'll read them together. Nine one is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the right-of-way vacation request V C ten twenty-one submitted by Lawrence Kramer on behalf of the property owner eight hundred Old Griffin LLC. For the property generally located between block three and block two, to the immediate north and south respectively, and between the intersection of Northwest Ninth and Eighth Avenues to the immediate west and east respectively, which right-of-way is contained within the platidania manor according to Platebook Ten, page fifty-three of the Public Records Book for Broward County, which right-of-way is generally described as Northwest Third Place and is located within the city of Dania Beach, Florida, which right-of-way is legally described in Exhibit A. A copy wishes attached to this ordinance, providing for conflicts, writing for severability, further providing for an effective date, first reading. And the companion resolution is a resolution of the City Commission for the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the requests for a site plan S P oh eight seven twenty, design exception O T oh one two twenty-one, and variances V A oh oh six twenty-one, V A oh oh seven twenty-one, and V A oh oh eight twenty-one, and V A oh oh nine twenty-one submitted by Lawrence Kramer on behalf of Old, eight hundred Old Griffin LLC for the property at eight hundred Old Griffin, uh, City of Dania Beach, Florida, as legally described in Exhibit A, and provided for this resolution, writing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. Corinne will swear you in.
Thank you.
Corinne?
She needs to be unmuted. There we go.
Yes.
Hey, you swear from a testimony. You'll be given to be the truth holders and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Good evening, Commissioners. Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director in Community Development. And I do have a presentation to, to go through for these two items, nine one and nine two. Um, so it is for, the requests are for site plan, variances, um, and exception as well as a vacation of right-of-way. Um, so I'll try to be brief but comprehensive at the same time. So, um, as you know, the property is located at eight hundred Old Griffin Road. The, the next slide identifies the zoning being marine and located in the Regional Activity Center. The subject property consists of existing marine industrial building, a parking lot, and vacant land which has overhead power lines, F P N L, high voltage power lines over that property. The proposal would allow manufacturing, repairing, um, docking, and outdoor storage of boats on the property. If approved, the redevelopment would reduce the non-conformity of the existing site. Um, the next slide shows an aerial photo of the location of the property and they have been able to assemble multiple parcels under the one ownership. So you can see outlined in yellow are the parcels that are under, um, development that are requesting these site plans and variances. It's all, each of these parcels. Um, you can kind of see on the, um, right-hand side, the, the structures of those high voltage power lines, those lines, that's kind of where it turns and it goes parallel along the bottom, horizontally along the bottom through that vacant lot. You know, across the bottom of the screen is where the lines fall. Um, the next slide, please. So I'll get into the variance request right off. The first variance request is with regards to tree height. Um, they're asking to allow fourteen foot tall trees instead of the sixteen that is required. And a lot of this is due to the, um, location of those power lines. F P N L has strict regulations regarding trees when it comes to interfacing with those power lines. So this is necessitating the variance for the trees. The next, um, slide, um, talks about the trees again, but now it's, um, the type of trees because we require a mix of trees, um, palms, shade trees, and intermediate height trees. So the applicant allowing, uh, requesting a reduction. They're requesting fifteen percent shade trees where forty is required and eight percent intermediate trees where thirty is, uh, required. Again, um, the, the larger the tree, the shade trees tend to be larger, which is going to be problematic when it comes to the power lines. So a lot of this is, again, necessitated by the power lines. The next slide, um, is the third variance request, which is to allow as little as zero, um, foot setback for the buildings. Now, this is a range. They, um, the building setback is going to vary between zero feet at its, at its narrowest to twenty and a half feet. And the reason why is, um, a lot of these roads around the subject property are narrow and substandard today. Um, as a result of the development request, the applicant is going to be dedicating land to these right-of-ways to bring them up to conformity as much as he is obligated to, which is basically, um, half of the right-of-way where he touches the road, half of the right-of-way he has to dedicate to meet code. In doing that, he loses a lot of that prop, the property line gets readjusted and moved and these setbacks end up getting smaller, which is why he needs the variance, um, request for these items, for the setbacks. The next slide is the final variance, and this is, um, regarding, um, right-of-way dedication. So the, um, and they're asking to maintain the building setback on Old Griffin Road. Old Griffin Road is twenty-four feet wide and the code currently requires a thirteen-foot dedication from the property line to the center line of the road to achieve that, the required width of the roadway. But the building exists today. And so that limits the ability for that dedication along that right-of-way. Um, where he can on the, um, east, west, and the south parcel, they are making the dedications. It's just this one frontage on Old Griffin that they're unable to do so. Um, the next slide talks about the variance criteria, which is identified in the Land Development Code. We have five variance criteria. They're also identified in the staff report. The applicant has submitted a written justification identifying how their requests are consistent with our criteria. Staff has provided analysis in the staff report as well, and we support the variances that are requested. Um, the next slide is regarding an exemption request. And this exemption request is for the industrial design standards requirements. And there's actually two provisions in that industrial design standards that they're unable to meet. Um, the first is they are requesting the use of metal wall panels where the code prohibits it. And they, um, also they're providing no glass on the facades. Um, there are minimum glass requirements in the industrial design standards. Again, um, a lot of this has to do with the existing building, um, the placement of the existing building. The building's already there. Um, in addition to the uses that are there proposing, they're proposing industrial uses. And, um, I believe the, the window placement would interfere with the activities that they're proposing inside the building. So they're asking for, um, waiver of those two requirements for the design standards. Um, the next slide, we talk about the exemption criteria. There are criteria in the Land Development Code for exempt, um, exemptions or exceptions, which the applicant did address in their justification and, and staff provided an analysis in the staff report as well. And staff, um, is in support of the exemption request as well. The next slide speaks to the vacation of the right-of-way. Um, the applicant is requesting to vacate a small section of Northwest Third Place. It's three hundred linear feet and it runs between Northwest Eighth Avenue and Northwest Ninth Avenue. The property owner owns the property to the north and to the south. So typically when a va-, when a roadway is vacated, half of the roadway is given to each adjacent property owner. But in this case, the property owner owns each side, so he would get the whole right-of-way, um, would be turned over to him. And the reason they're asking for this, uh, vacation is because, um, it, it deadends to the east and the west. It deadends. It doesn't provide access, you know, continuous access. There is still access on the east and the west with Northwest Ninth Avenue and Northwest Eighth Avenue. And they're going to utilize Northwest Third Place as, um, as a private, as a driveway, um, as part of their site plan. So they, they're unable to do that if it's a street, which is why they're asking for the, the, um, the vacation. Um, next slide, please. So this is what it looks like, that roadway segment looks like today. Um, they're essentially, um, almost using both sides of it now. But, um, with their proposed, um, site plan utilizes that more as a driveway for the property, which is why they're asking to use that land. The next slide talks about, um, the, our provisions for vacation requests. The applicant, um, is requesting, um, the vacation, the code requires to, that the applicant provide evidence that they've notified, notified all utilities, public and private, that might have an interest in the right-of-way. Um, they were able to provide notice to all of the utilities in January of this year. Um, there, um, I'm looking at my notes. I'm sorry. I know that, um, when they notified the city, there is a, I believe the water line's underground. So the city doesn't oppose, or Public Works didn't oppose the vacation, but they are asking for an easement to be established on the land so that if they needed to maintain those lines, they could access the property to do so. Um, the next slide, um, refers to the land development regulations and the provisions, um, that are identified for the vacation process. And the applicant has submitted their written justification identifying how their requests are consistent with the vacation requirements. And they've been able to meet all those criteria. So staff is in support of that, of the vacation request as well. The next slide is a graphic that shows the dedications that the applicant is making towards the substandard roadways that are around, as well as the easement that they're establishing. So, um, the dedications are in green and the, um, utility easement that will be placed on that vacated roadway is identified in yellow. And the segment that's being requested for vacation is in pink. So they are dedicating land and at the same time requesting vacation of ro-, right-of-way as well. Um, the next slide, we start to talk about the site plan. And the applicant proposes to refurbish the existing structure and build out a second story, uh, office space on the structure. To the west, the existing surface lot will be restriped and landscaped. To the south, the vacant land will be paved and used for outdoor boat storage and vehicle parking. That's the area that's underneath the power lines. The next slide, um, to the east, there'll be additional landscaping, um, and an enclosure for a dumpster. To the north, the north parcel, there'll be a five-foot dock will be built parallel to the Dania Cut-off Canal for up to seven, um, seventeen boat berths. The dock area will be secured with a vinyl-coated fence parallel to Old Griffin Road. Um, the next slide, I have The next slide, I have some elevations of the building, you know, renderings that they're proposing in term, showing the improvements that they're making along with that second floor addition for the office space. The next slide is particular to the docks. Let's see. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to point out here. The, in yellow, it identifies the property line. If you notice that property line is underwater. So it really is extends into the water. And you, of course, you can't see it, you know, standing there, you wouldn't know that, but I want, that's why I wanted to point it out. It shows the five-foot dock that runs parallel to the bank. And then it also shows the, the proximity of that water edge because there is no seawall. It's more of a natural shoreline there. That's why it meanders. It's not a straight line. The next slide. This is also illustrating the docks. It shows, it's like a cross-section of, of the canal showing the bank. The bottom slide seems to give me more information. It shows what the proposed floating dock would look like. It would, the water level does, is lower than the adjacent bank. So there will be like a, a bridge. What are they calling that? A proposed concrete? I can't read that. Like a ramp down to that floating dock. And again, circled in red is the property line. So these docks are not going beyond the property line. They're still within the property line, within private property. It just happens to be underwater. Okay, the next slide talks about the public outreach that the applicant did. As you know, staff requires all the applicants to do public outreach prior to the public hearing notice. So they've been, since December of last year through March of this year, they've been actively contacting the neighborhood associations and adjacent communities. As people call and ask questions particularly about like the business operations, we've referred them to the applicant and they've been able to speak to additional, you know, residents that way as well. The next slide is discussing the development review committee. Of course, it's a site plan, so it went through the development review committee. This actually went through the DRC three times, November, December and Janu, and February. There are outstanding DRC comments that remain that must be addressed prior to the issuance of the permit. The applicant is aware of those and they're identified in the resolution if it's approved tonight. Our next slide. The planning and zoning board did hear the request for the vacation in April and they recommended to the city commission that it be approved. It, vacation does require two readings, so this is first reading tonight. Staff recommendation is approval of the ordinance to vacate Northwest Third Place with the condition that the utility easement is recorded in Broward County Public Records prior to the issuance of a permit. And then with regards to the variance, exception and site plan, staff's recommending approval of the resolution with the outstanding DRC comments as conditions of approval to be addressed prior to the issuance of the permit as well. I'm available if you have any questions. I know the applicant is online as well. And I know they might want to speak to the project. I see Vice Mayor's hand up.
Corinne, you know, I spoke to you about this a while back on slide number eighteen. It showed that there were some docks. I thought that the, I, I questioned the thing unless I'm misunderstanding or missing something here. They were, maybe go, go to seventeen. Yep, okay. On seventeen, where it shows the property line that's in the water and then you show the, the five-foot dock on there. I was under the impression that there wasn't going to be any docks on that waterway at that time and that that has to do with the South Florida Water Management. If they were to get that approved down there. The other question I had was that they, I had questioned how they're going to cross Old Griffin Road to get to those. And they said there was not going to be any, anything being crossed on the road to go to the docks.
So South Florida Water Management District does have to approve any improvements in the waterway. That's something that will be required prior to the issuance of the permit. That's something typically we look at at building permit. So that's something that applicant will have to address as they move forward. Unfortunately, there will be crossing a Old Griffin Road because there's no parking on the north side. So any parking is going to be on the south side of Griffin Road. They are providing a pedestrian at crossing. I think the applicant can speak to this as well. What they had initially proposed was an enhanced pedestrian crosswalk with, that had flashing lights. But unfortunately, that's something that Broward County engineers have to approve and they're unable to do so until sometime in the future after there's been like a monitoring period. So in the meantime, they're providing the pedestrian crossing, a crosswalk over Old Griffin.
One more question on that. So the docks are there, the docks are being, I guess, would be a least situation. They're not for them to work on the boats there. And that means they're not going to be, are they, you know, are they a marina where they're going to be taking one of the big forklifts across and dropping boats into the water across Griffin Road?
Right. So that was one of the questions of the residents and I'm told no, but I'm sure the applicant can address that also. And you know, if that is a concern, I mean, it might be a condition that you want to add that they can be no boat work occurring on those docks. I mean, that wasn't something that we had looked at as part of the site plan. It's not a condition, you know, something identified in our land development regulations. But if that's something that you want to add, we can do so.
I, that's, that'd be up to the commission to decide on that. I think that when you start turning the waterway into a, a repair service, I think it takes away from the, you know, the waterway itself. I would think that they would be better off pulling the boat out of the water and working out in their facility. You know, it's my opinion, but I, I was a little confused. I thought that they weren't even proposing the docks at this time, but you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? I really can't see you, um, because the screen is shared. Oh, there we go. Any other questions from any of the electeds or because this is a public hearing, is there anyone to speak for or against this? The only, the only issue that I would say or condition, Corinne, is that when they start the construction or, or whatever they're going to use to, to make it a condition to not have those big trucks go through the neighborhoods, but to just use Old Griffin. I know that it sounds crazy that, that is a major thoroughfare, but I do know how, um, with a lot of those projects, they use that bridge and that bridge, you know, has, has caused some issues with the amount of construction and, and the trucks that have gone through that neighborhood. So if we can limit or mandate that they cannot use other roads except for the main thoroughfares, I, I would appreciate that.
Yes. If, if someone just adds that to the motion, if it, if one is made, we'll include it.
Okay. No one from the public has raised their hand to speak, so we're waiting for a motion in a second.
I'm making a motion to, and I'll, I'll add the, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to make a motion adding the mayor's conditions.
Those, those would be attached to the, the second, to the resolution. The first one's for the vacation. So that's a straight vacation. I need a motion for the vacation.
Okay, nine point one. This is the motion for nine point one. Motion to approve. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Lou Ellen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodman.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Savino.
Yes.
Mayor James.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And then nine two, the site plan would have the two conditions mentioned by both the vice mayor and the mayor as to the trucks and no repair work or maintenance work on the, any boat at the docks.
I'd love, I'd like to say something about that before we make a motion. Is that's okay, Mayor?
That's fine.
Okay. You know, I'm talking about like severely tearing a boat down. If they go down to the water and they start the boat up down there and they kind of like look at it, but it starts getting into more than just a diagnostic a situation, I think that I would, that I would like it to be, or they have not worked in the water. You can read whoever's making the motion and add that along with it. I appreciate it.
I'll make the motion to approve with the mayor's condition as well as the vice mayor's last condition that he just made now.
And I'll second that.
Um, we, this is a public hearing. You want to speak for or against that? I didn't ask that question again. All right, we have the motion in a second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Lou Ellen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodman. Vice Mayor Savino.
Yes.
Mayor James.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item three and four are related, so I'll read them together, but of course they'll be voted on separately. Nine three, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Danube, Florida approving the following requests for site plan, SP thirty-eight oh eight MOD two. Two variances, VA oh oh five twenty and VA oh oh six twenty. Special exception SE oh oh eight twenty and public art waiver OT oh twenty-four twenty-one approval as submitted by Browser Maimonides Academy for the property located at fifty-three hundred Southwest Fortyth Avenue within the city of Danube, Florida, as legally described, Exhibit A, the property, a copy which is attached to this resolution. Providing for conditions, providing for conflicts, for the providing for an effective date. And the companion resolution is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Danube, Florida approving the delegation requests for the amendment of the location for a non-vehicular access line and NVAL under DR ninety-five twenty and a plat note amendment relating to the total square feet of school use. BR ninety-eight twenty submitted by Cynthia Pasche AICP on behalf of the property owner, Maimonides Shalom Academy, Inc., for the property located at fifty-three hundred Southwest Fortyth Avenue in the city of Danube, Florida. As even, I've been Exhibit A, a copy which is attached to the resolution, ready for conflicts, for the providing for an effective date.
Yes, Mr. Lorber. Oh, I'm unmuting you.
I pressed it about three times. Not sure what the issue is.
All right, try again. There you go.
Thank you. Tom, you want to swear me in?
Yes, you swear for a testimony. You'll be giving me the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Staff, members of the public. I'm Richard Lorber. I'm representing the, the Community Development Department. Also in the audience is Eleanor Norina and Corinne LaJoy and also Ann Christine Carey, who also worked on this project. This presentation is going to be for number nine, three and number nine, four together. And so this is the Maimonides Academy. And the location is fifty-three hundred Southwest Fortyth Avenue. Next slide, please. Property is about six and two-thirds acres in total. And it contains the existing Maimonides Academy Academic School. The zoning of the property is part single-family and part multifamily residential. And the land use designated designation is medium sixteen residential. Next. This is the location of the property highlighted. The entrance is on the west along Southwest Fortyth Avenue. To the south and the east of the property is part of the city of Hollywood. Within Dana Beach, to the north are the Oak Hills Apartments. And across Southwest Fortyth Avenue are several different multifamily apartment and townhouse complexes. The applicant is requesting several approvals tonight. I will go through them each one by one. Next slide, please. Variance one is a request to permit a building height of twenty-eight feet. Where the maximum building height that's permitted is twenty-five feet, so a three-foot high height variance. We have this provision in place to ensure compatibility with the surrounding residential home structures. The applicant has submitted their justification identifying how the request is consistent with the criteria. And community development staff has analyzed those criteria and that is in your staff report. And staff supports the request. Primarily, the building is right in the middle of the site and three feet is almost imperceptible. Next slide, please. The second variance is requested to permit an eight-foot-high masonry wall along the length of the front yard or western property line, basically along the street. Maximum, the maximum height that's permitted is four to six feet depending on the zoning. So this is a request for eight foot. The applicant has given their justification why this is consistent. Primarily due to security reasons, it's a school protection of the students. We've reviewed this and we are, the staff also supports the second variance request. Next. This is an expansion of the existing school with the addition of a new two-story school building and a basketball canopy. A, a school is permitted as a special exception in both these zoning districts. Existing school capacity is five hundred and seventy and will be increased to a maximum total of nine hundred and fifty students. The applicant has given their justification how the proposal is consistent with the eleven special exception criteria. This is also included in the staff report and staff supports the special exception request. The next slide goes into the amendments to the plat, which are the delegation requests of item nine point four. And this goes along with the site plan. This is a plat note amendment to increase from eighty-five hundred, eighty-five thousand square foot of school use use up to ninety-nine thousand square feet of private school use. And also amendment to the non-vehicular access line, which is going to restrict the turning into the driveway. Right turn in and emergency use and right turn out. This, I will show you this further in the site plan. Next. The, the proposal i, is to expand this existing school with a two-story addition. The school currently is fifty-two thousand square feet and the addition will be thirty-three thousand square feet. Also, a nine thousand square foot canopy covering the outdoor basketball courts. The capacity will be increased. And the development is proposed for two phases. The first phase is a larger structure, including the gymnasium and classrooms. The second phase is a smaller additional structure, which will have cafeteria, kitchen and office space. Next, please. Here's a picture. You can see the front entrance along Southwest Fortyth Street. And the next picture shows you an aerial view. Next. There you go. So you can see from the aerial view, uh, the, the street, the entrances. The basketball court is in the center, that colored blue thing. And the buildings will be going right below the basketball court in front of the existing building. So everything contained right in the center. And next slide shows a rendering of the north facade of the new building. So it fits right in with the existing buildings. Next. The main we looked at in the planning and zoning division is the traffic circulation. And as we went through the process, the school has proposed improvements in the way they pick up and drop off the students. That involves the internal circulation and stacking. By redoing the way they circulate the cars, um, this will limit the backing up of cars onto the road during those peak drop-off areas. Uh, are, we have traffic engineering consultant view this during the DRC. The engineering consultant has approved this, but requests that the school provide traffic control personnel during these peak times of operation to assist the traffic coming in and out. And they, they'll show you this, uh, on the traffic plan that they will actually double the capacity of the, the cars in the line by bringing them into the school and snaking through a, a longer line to pick the kids up. Also, the school has offered to use this app, a smart mobility system called Pick My Kid that they use to schedule pickups and this helps move the traffic quicker. We've made these conditions of approval and the applicant has agreed. The next slide. The, one of the requests in this application is the public art impact fee waiver. As you know, the city's public art program requires As you know, the city's public art program requires new projects of over a million dollars in value to contribute towards public art. And this project is valued at about seven million dollars. So that would be required to contribute approximately thirty-five thousand dollars towards the city's public art fund. Or they could contribute half that amount, about seventeen thousand five hundred toward the public art fund, and install public art onsite valued at that same amount, about seventeen-five. In, in other words, half the contribution. The code allows the commission to exempt schools from this requirement, and the applicant has applied for the waiver of public art impact fee. So the commission may choose one of the following. You can fully waive the public art fee in its entirety, partially waive the public art fee, and ask the develop, the applicant to provide a public art installation onsite, and waiving the financial contribution to the art fund. Or you could deny the request and require the hundred percent participation in the program. Next slide. Just for your knowledge, the, the city has collected a hundred and sixty-four thou, almost a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars so far for the public art fund. And we've spent fifty-seven thousand dollars to create the public art master plan. So that's where we are currently. As additional developments get building permits, the fund will grow over time. An installation of public art at this location would be the first one in this neighborhood. It could help distinguish the neighborhood and create a sense of community. So that's why the community development staff is recommending the partial waiver option, asking the developer to provide public art installation onsite, but waiving the financial contribution to the art fund. Next. Public outreach, a- as Corinne mentioned in the last item, we always direct the applicant to reach out to nearby residents early in the review process. This applicant held a virtual community meeting. It was several months ago. And their group attended the meeting. Dennis Mealy made a presentation to the group. They say they discussed where the traffic counts, the traffic study, concerns about the new development towards the south. There were also issues about a shed on the property and the trees on the northern property line. So they met, they discussed that. The applicant indicates that it was a positive meeting. And the public outreach materials are included in your staff report packages. Next, please. The site plan itself was reviewed three times by the DRC, which is fire, public services, landscaping, zoning. There are outstanding comments, as, as is typical, and that's to be addressed prior to the building permit. They're listed in, as conditions in the approval resolution. Next. In conclusion, we recommend approval of a partial public art waiver and approval of the variances, special exception, site plan modification, and the plat note amendments, with the extra conditions that they must use traffic control personnel during peak times of operation to assist in guiding traffic to min, to minimize congestion on Southwest Fortieth Avenue. And they must use either the Pick My Kid Smart Mobility System or equivalent software to enhance and expedite the student pickup process. And as usual, with the outstanding DRC con, comments included in the conditions of approval. That's it. I'm here for any questions. The applicant is here, ready to make their presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mealy, do you want to make a presentation as well? Hold on, you're, you're muted. Hold on one second. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Broward Boulevard for Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. I do have a few slides to show, although I won't show all of them because Mr. Lorber has really covered everything in a very thorough manner. Pull up those slides that we have, please. Put them on the screen. I'm not, I'm not sure who has them, but I know we said, we sent them in. There we go. Thank you. If we can go to the next slide, please. So that's just an aerial photo of our site. We can go to the next one. Okay, and then you, you see the basketball courts there in the center, in that kind of blue and light blue. And what we're doing is putting a, a cover over them. It will be open on the sides, but it will provide a roof over the basketball court, so when it's very sunny, you can still play. When it's raining, you can still play. And then if we can go to the next slide, please. So now you see those basketball courts in gray, kind of in the center, and that cover will go over them. And then you see the existing buildings are in dark gray. Those are staying the same as what they are today. And then the two new buildings are in the kind of cross-hatched gray. The larger of those two, that's right below the basketball courts, that's the new gymnasium and classroom building. That's the building where we need the extra three feet in height. And I think as Mr. Lorber said, you know, based on it being between the new basketball court covering and the other buildings that are already there, I don't think anyone will notice the three feet. Now, why is the three feet necessary? There's a gymnasium in the building. You need clearance under the roof for no games that involve throwing balls and kicking balls and so on, so that you, you need that extra roof clearance. You see the very large green area to the right that will all remain as is. And you notice that nothing that we're doing is bringing any of our buildings any closer to our neighbors than where they are now. Everything is being built in the center of the site. We will be doing a new line of trees all along the northern property line as an additional buffer from our neighbors to the north. The maintenance shed that was raised in our community meeting has already been removed and a new one put in place. And so if we can go to the next slide, please. And then this is just showing you a perspective, so Fortieth Avenue would be off to the right. The basketball court covering you see is that white building that has a little bit of a peak roof on it. And then just, you know, to the, above that is the new building with the gymnasium and combination classrooms. And, and again, you see everything kind of fits within the framework or the footprint of where the buildings are today. You also see the wall along Fortieth kind of shown in white. And we do want the eight-foot height rather than the four-foot on a portion and six-foot on a portion. And when we met with the neighbors, I think the neighbors also felt anything that we could do to kind of contain ourselves within our property, cut down on noise, cut down on visibility would be a positive. So that's why we're asking for that little bit taller wall along Fortieth. And it will be a decorative wall. It'll look very nice. It's not, not something just real plain. If we can go to the next slide, please. So I'm going to pass through these next few because Mr. Lorber described them, and you can go all the way to page number twelve, if you would. Okay, so here's the main thing I want to talk about. In order to make sure that we're improving traffic and not making it worse, we're doing a very extensive redo on our traffic pattern. So this shows you the way parents line up today to drop off or pick up their kids. And you see that red line. And so that red line has room for a total of thirty-three vehicles. Eight in the turn lane, and you see the turn lane on Fortieth is all the way down at the lower left of this graphic. And then within the site, there's only room for another twenty-five vehicles. So that's how you get to that thirty-three total. Now, if you go to the next slide, please, we'll show you the proposed drop-off and pickup routing. So now you see in green, if you start at the lower left-hand part, part of this drawing, you see the existing turn lane, but then what we're doing is instead of student, instead of parents coming in the southern gate, they're going to come in the northern gate. And we're taking that whole area between the southern gate and the northern gate and lengthening that whole turn lane along Fortieth Avenue. So previously, only eight cars could stack up in that turn lane. When we finish this improvement, twenty-four cars will be able to stack up just in the turn lane alone, along Fortieth. And then within the property, if you remember on the previous slide, there was room for twenty-five cars to stack inside the property. With this new configuration, you notice how we come up the northern gate, you go down to the south. We have this little new roundabout we're putting in. You go round the roundabout, and then you come back up to go in front of the school. Instead of having room for twenty-five cars onsite, we have room for forty-eight cars onsite. So we're going from a total of thirty-three cars in the current configuration to seventy-two cars in the new configuration. And then in addition to this one hundred and eighteen percent increase in car stacking, we're doing three more things. You notice the green bars that say drop-off pickup in the two locations. There's actually several drop-off pickup locations along those, those linear routes there. So we'll have more places where a child can get in the car, and then the parent can leave. So we have multiple drop-off pickup locations along those two green bars. In addition, we're implementing this Pick My Kid phone app. So when you're coming to pick up your child in the afternoon, you will know when the child is being brought towards the door so that you can pull up with your car as the child's coming out of the building, pick him up and go on your way, so that you're not sitting there taking up room any more than you have to. So in addition to going from thirty-three cars to seventy-two cars, we're also providing multiple pickup and drop-off locations, and we're providing the computer app to make sure that the pickup and drop-off is more efficient and people move through faster. We're also going to have the staff directing traffic during the peak times, as was recommended by the city's traffic engineer. So that was one of the main things we talked about when we met with our neighbors about improving traffic. Additionally, most of our parents come from the south, but we're also lengthening the left turn lane from southbound Fortieth Avenue that's there today. There's room for a longer turn lane. A lot of it's striped off so that it can't be used. When we make the road improvements to put in this turn lane, we will also make the improvement to lengthen that southbound left turn lane to make that traffic movement more efficient as well. If you could go to the next slide, please. And, you know, this slide is, is on a perspective. It's on an angle. So the dotted lines and the solid lines don't necessarily look proportionate. But the, the solid yellow area is the current turn lane. That will remain, and then we will add the dotted yellow line area for that much longer turn lane that we described. So it will make it so that cars are not stacking onto the through lanes of Fortieth. They'll be able to get into the turn lane, get into the gate. The other thing we're doing is we're staggering our dismissal times so that certain, you know, elementary school students will get out earlier than middle school students and that sort of thing, so that everyone's not coming at the same time. So between lengthening the turn lane, providing more stacking on the interior of the property, putting in the computer app for more efficient pickup, staggering the dismissal times, and having the personnel there during these pickup and drop-off peak times to direct traffic, we think that we will have a much better operation, much better than it is today, even though the school is growing. Now, neighbors also asked about noise. We have had to have our activities like graduation and that sort of thing outdoors because we didn't have an indoor space big enough to accommodate those kinds of events. When we build the new gymnasium with classrooms, that gymnasium will now have the space to have those events. So those events can happen indoors rather than outside. And that obviously will be better for any noise considerations. As I mentioned, also, the basketball court cover should contribute to noise attenuation. The additional landscaping along the northern property line will do the same. And then in terms of the additional landscaping along the northern property line, we have already agreed to put that in early during our construction process so that those trees start growing and start providing the good buffer that we need along the northern property line. In terms of the plat items, in order to reconfigure these driveways the way I've, I'm showing on the screen and the turning movements into the driveways, that's what that non-vehicular access line amendment is all about. It's about moving that main access from the south property line to the north and providing for the proper turning movements to get there. And then the other part of item nine point four is the plat note amendment. Obviously, as we're increasing the square footage of the school, it needs to be reflected on the plat note amendment. So all of the items I've talked about so far, the staff has recommended approval. We agree with the staff's recommendation. We agree with the conditions that the staff has recommended as well, and we will comply with all of those conditions. The last item is the public art waiver. As you know, the public art program was pursuant to an ordinance adopted in December of two thousand and nineteen. The ordinance does provide that the commission may exempt the following from the public art program, and there's four categories. The first would be reconstructing a building that was damaged by a fire, flood, wind, or natural disaster. Obviously, that doesn't apply to us. The second one is there, the commission may exempt a school from the public art program. Obviously, we are a school. And then the other two categories were churches or places of worship could be exempt, and affordable housing projects receiving economic development grants or incentives could be exempt. So I, I know that this is, at least from what I've heard, this is the first time that someone is requesting that waiver. The school is a five oh one C three. It is a nonprofit organization. And we understand the importance of art, and we don't mean to minimize it. We understand the importance of art and education, as staff has cited. So we did ask for that request. So tho, those are all of the things that are associated with this. I do want to say that I remember being at some of your meetings a few years ago. I was not working on this project at the time. I remember that the school had some proposals for expansion that did not include all of these road improvements and the reworking of the pickup and drop-off and the computer program and all the other things we're doing. So we felt that as we met with neighbors, we were getting a better response this time because we weren't ignoring the traffic issue. We were addressing and improving the traffic issue with what we're proposing to do. I also want to point out that this turn lane expansion can be done within the right-of-way of Fortieth Avenue, so there's no right-of-way issues. There's a drainage ditch in that area now, where you see the dotted lines. We will obviously be piping that and making sure that that drainage works properly, but allows the turn lane to go in. And that's, that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and if there's any public comment, like the opportunity to respond is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. We, I think we have several questions. I'll go in order that I saw. Vice Mayor Salvino.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. On, on all the comments that are made, I do know that the staggering of the pickups work. I do know that the implementing of the computer system to have your child picked up works. You know, all those things are good because I think that that would be a benefit to what's going on there. Because I do, they use that word. I pick up my grandkids from school, and it works well. It usually doesn't take the streets up more than probably twenty-five to thirty-five minutes of blocking some of the streets. But where my concern comes in is, if I heard correctly, you have the staging area heading for the south, I mean, heading from the, yeah, from the south to the north to turn right into the school. And so, and that, I guess, would work okay, especially if you use the staggering dimes. What I didn't understand is that you also are going to allow them to come from the north to the south, if I heard you correctly. And if you do that, then you have backups on the other side of the street as well. And I think that the traffic studies or the, or the people, I think, once they get acclimated to it, I don't, I think they should all come from one direction and not block up the, the street on both sides and have people running up and down the streets with the, I don't know whether you're going to have stop signs or people allowing traffic to go or what. But if you allow it to back up one way, I think it would be better to come from south to north and, and there and eliminate the stopping from the north to south. and in there and eliminate the stopping from the north to south. That's my opinion on that. The other thing is on the arts waiver, I am opposed to that already. I think they should, thirty-five thousand dollars and it should be included. And I think that seventeen thousand five hundred should be arts in the school. I think the other seventeen thousand five hundred should be applied specifically to Fortieth Avenue in that area to beautify that area with arts there because I think that street needs an upgrade with that because of all the things that are going on over there. All the projects on both sides of the street. That's my opinion, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, could I respond to the vice mayor's questions?
Absolutely. But I just want to caution Vice Mayor that I don't think that we can allocate certain funds to a certain neighborhood. That's something that I tried to do before and we got a legal opinion. So I'm not sure if that would work, but we can definitely come up with a project for Fortieth and then vote for that. So go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Could I ask that the city clerk put back up page fourteen of my presentation? I want to answer the vice mayor's question and that will help me do that. That's the aerial photo with the, you know, there we go. So you'll notice if you look all the way up in the left hand, upper left-hand corner of this drawing, you see the turn lane north of us, but you see how it's striped off? So we're going to remove that striping and lengthen that turn lane, but that's not for us. All of our traffic is coming right turn in and right turn out. So they're coming from the south, they're coming in the northern access, and when they leave, they turn right to go out. So we're really lengthening that turn lane, not for our use, but because when we talked to neighbors, they said, you know, you got this whole area striped off. Why can't we open it up and make it available for turning movements? So we said, we'd be happy to make that improvement.
I understand. I'm just, I guess my concern was that with the stripe, the area to the, the yellow, that's your staging area to turn right into the school. I know you looped around, you were going to come out and you're going to come out the other end of the school and you're going to turn right and only go north. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, but the thing is, coming from the north side of, coming from northbound to south, are they going to be able to turn left into there? Are they going to stage there and come left? Are you not going to allow them to turn in from both sides of the street?
No, they will not be able to turn left and come in. We did a traffic study of our current, you know, enrollment and our current parent routing, and almost everyone is coming from the south. So what they asked us to do on the traffic study is they said, assume one hundred percent of your cars are coming from the south and make sure your turn lanes and your stacking can accommodate one hundred percent of your cars. And that's
I mean, if they're not blocking the north-south entrance and not being able to turn there and block in both ways, I understand. Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Luella.
Hi. I actually, I like this new plan for the queue outside of the school. I think that's going to be a tremendous help with the traffic on that road. And I have not heard anything from the residents complaining about this, actually, this time. They maybe, I don't know, but I haven't heard anything. And this was a project that I've been hearing about for a couple of years now, and I've been to some of the meetings, in fact. So I am happy with that. And I'm actually happy with all the other improvements and everything that's being recommended by staff. The Art in Public Places ordinance, though, that is finished. And art is great for the kids. You know, you've got kids in the school and it would be wonderful if there was either art there for them to be able to look at and enjoy. Or, you know, if there's money being put into the fund. I don't care which way it's done, whether it's the amount being put into the fund or if it's split halfway where some of the money goes in the fund and some of the money goes towards an art project somewhere. But it would be nice for the school to be able to point to certain projects and be able to say, this is what we did with all of these improvements. In addition to that, we also contributed to the city and this is what we did with it and this is what the end result was. So I'm, basically, it looks to me, as of right now, I like the project as it is. I just, I have a hesitancy about the Art in Public Places funding and I'd like to see that addressed by the applicant as well.
Mayor, could I respond?
Yes.
You know, we made the request for the public art fee waiver because we're a five oh one C three nonprofit, but we certainly would not let the overall project fail over that issue. Let me just say that.
I would hope not. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, I can't see. Okay, now I can. Yes, and Commissioner Davis, do you have questions too? Okay, so Commissioner, I'm in, Commissioner Davis.
Okay. I was just going to say, and this is really speaking to the commission, all of you guys. When we were crafting that, the Art in Public Places, this was the kind of situation why we allowed that ability to do public art on the, on their property. And we really went back and forth on it a lot. I wanted it out. I wanted them to straight have to pay into the fund. But for that, maybe it was the attorney, Mr. Little, who, you know, got me to see the light that in certain cases, it was a good thing to have that ability to do that. So I really liked the partial payment in and I would love to see the school do some kind of artwork on the site. I know several schools have taken the opportunity during COVID. They've done some very beautiful artworks to sort of, you know, brighten, brighten up, you know, the walls and I think it's a really nice opportunity as children next year will hopefully all be coming back into the schools for them to do that. So that would be what I would like to see for them to do the partial half and half as it was this kind of situation that we created that option for. That's all there.
So for clarification, because I want to understand, you would want the portion to pay a portion into the arts fund and the other portion for them to do the project at the school?
Yeah, they, so they have, and they have to submit it. They have to submit it to, I don't know who it is, Corinne or somebody in that department. And so it has to meet certain criteria. You know, they can't just put up a fountain and play this is public art. They, you know, there's certain criteria. I don't know off the top of my head. But they have to meet to qualify as public art, but that would be my recommendation, or whatever it was.
Corinne, I see you. Let me let Commissioner Davis go and then I, you want, okay, go ahead, Corinne.
Thank you. So there, I think there's a couple of different ways to achieve what I'm hearing if you really want the art installed on the site or in the neighborhood. They can choose to do the fifty-fifty, contribute half to the fund and half with an art installation on the site. That would get the art at that location. However, like Commissioner Ogden was talking about, that there, we have an art plan that we're in the process of creating with our consultant. And part of, one of the components of that is identifying locations for public art throughout the city. So you could identify this or prioritize this area as an area for future art installations. And so even the financial contribution that gets made to the city could end up being installed or having an installation in that area. And as the commissioner was speaking, when a developer wishes to put art on the site themselves, there are criteria that we are reviewing. We hope to get the whole program in front of you this summer. But there are criteria that are being recommended by our consultant that talk about, you know, values, description of the art, description of the artist. There are criterias that they need to provide to us to analyze it. And then once it's installed, they have to go through a maintenance process and clarify with, that the art goes with the land and a deed. So there are provisions, once the art is installed, as to how that is handled through the city.
Commissioner Davis, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to say that this is a wonderful project. Overall, I really loved the road improvements and it was a very thorough presentation. I think this is going to be something that's good for the city and good for the school. I am in agreement with the vice mayor at this point for the full amount that should be invested for the public art fee. I, unless there's a specific rationale, I just heard, just because we're a five oh one C three, that we want to ask for the partial. And I'm wondering, is there any other rationale from this project for why you would not want to contribute to the public art fee?
Mayor, can I respond?
Of course.
So Commissioner, one of the things we worry about at this location, we worried about it in the past, we worry about it today, and we're going to worry about it in the future, is security. Unfortunately, sometimes certain religious groups or other groups are targeted by people who want to do harm. And so we try to be very low-key. We try to not, you know, advertise who we are. And so I guess, you know, we just are trying not to draw attention to ourselves from the public. I know that sounds, you know, like maybe we're worrying too much, but I don't think so. You know, the Department of Homeland Security checks in with us because of these types of things. So I guess that's part of it, too. You know, we're not saying, oh, it's thirty-five thousand dollars and we just don't want to do anything because in a seven million dollar project, that would be kind of short-sighted. So I think that's really where we're coming from.
Thank you for that insight.
Okay, before we go to citizens' comments, the only thing that I, concern that I had was that I spoke with Mr. Mealy, he gave me the presentation, but I don't know how I missed that five hundred going to nine hundred. So although we are creating more stacking and more movability, we are also adding four hundred, the ability to have four hundred more students. So I want, just keep that in mind because Fortieth is already a nightmare at certain times for many of us if you choose to travel that way. But I really think that that is going to be an issue. As the vice mayor said, you're going to have people coming from north to south that is going to want to have to turn somewhere to get in line and that is going to cause the traffic concern there. Mr. Mealy, I'm not sure if you all have a resolution for that. But I know that, I like that the school is expanding, but I am a little concerned about what that is going to mean for Fortieth. I know that it's going from twenty-five cars, a hundred and twelve percent, as you said. But I wonder how that is compared to how many bodies that would be able to fit in that school. And the second thing about the graduations, you said, will be able to be indoors and the noise that comes from that. But from what I understand, the gym just has a covering and no walls. So how much of a buffer would that noise really be if the graduations are in the gymnasiums that don't have walls but has a roof?
So Mayor, the gymnasium building is a real building with walls and a roof. And then we're just putting a cover over the outdoor basketball court.
Okay, thank you.
And then the vehicle stacking is increasing by a hundred and eighteen percent, going from thirty-three to seventy-two. The student enrollment is only increasing sixty-seven percent, going from five seventy to nine fifty. So the traffic analysis we did assumed that every single car for these nine hundred and fifty students was coming from the south. And the parents are going to have to come from the south because you're not going to be allowed to make a left turn into the building. Now, when we did our traffic study, the overwhelming percentage of people were coming from the south anyway. And so, you know, the good news here is, is the parents understand if you're going to drive your student to school or pick them up, you have to follow the rules. You have to come when you're supposed to come. You have to drive in the driveway you're supposed to drive in. And if you don't do it, then you will be told that you can't pick up your kids. It's pretty straightforward. And like I said, our traffic engineer did an analysis and then the city's traffic engineer reviewed it and recommended certain improvements and certain modifications, including the staggered times, the personnel monitoring the parking lot and directing the traffic, the computer app. We believe that with all of these improvements, even with the student enrollment increase, we're going to have a better traffic situation once we do this than what we have today.
Okay, I really hope so. And so we'll get to the comments, the public comments. And then after that, if the item passes, we'll discuss the portion of the public art fund of what, you know, the commission would like to see, whether that is half and half or if that is full or whatever other conditions you all have. So this is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against, please use your, raise your hand tool and you will be called upon and you will have three minutes to state your opinion. I know that Majori Bernal, she has submitted a form. And so I don't know if we can see her on here, Frank. I don't see it under Majori.
There's a Marjorie in the middle.
Oh, Marjorie, I just messed her name up. Where, where do you see that? I don't see it. Well, can you unmute? Oh, I see it. Okay. Well, wait a second to see if we can get her unmuted. And then next will be Rolando Lanes.
Mayor Rolando Yanis is the project architect. So unless you have questions for him, I don't think he needs to say anything.
Got it. I butchered his name, too. I'm sorry. Marjorie, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Marjorie Bernal and I live at Opus five one seven zero, Southwest Fortieth Avenue. I don't know
I think Tom has to swear you in.
Oh.
Nope, that's my fault, not yours. Tom, we can't hear you. You're talking, but we can't hear you.
How about now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Swearer from the testimony, you're going to give me the truth, older than nothing but the truth.
I promise.
Thank you.
Okay, let's start again. My name is Marjorie Bernal. I live at five one seven zero, Southwest Fortieth Avenue, Unit nine E. And I, my window, my front door faces north, faces Maimonides. I am extremely glad to hear my questions answered before I even ask them. One of the things that I spoke about during our meeting at city hall the last time was the lack of landscaping that would mitigate the sound. And I miss my birds. If any of you were at that meeting, I made everybody smile because all the birds have gone. I don't have anyone to sing to me in the mornings. So I would definitely like to see the landscaping as soon as possible. You had mentioned that it was going to be done and the year has gone by and I don't see any of that. I would like to have an answer regarding that. How quickly, how soon are you going to replace the trees that were chopped down? Not only that, it's not only a question of noise on the trees, but it also has the added benefit of serving as a cover, as a shadow over the cars. And so, you know, I miss that. With regards to the traffic, I have seen a little bit of improvement now. You have extended the line of the cars going into Maimonides and I see improvement. But I have a question for the members over here that are listening. I noticed that there is a complex with ninety units being built and it seemed to me like it was overnight right on Fortieth Avenue. And even though it has nothing to do with Maimonides, I beg you to listen. We didn't see, none of us on Fortieth Avenue, so any notices of attending to voice our concerns. to voice our concerns regarding that project. And now Maimonides is doing everything that they can, uh but I'm concerned that um you know, the 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 street is way too narrow with only one lane going one way and the other. How is that going to affect Fortieth Avenue resident residents like me that sometimes we are forced to go all the way uh to Griffin Road, said uh Stable Seven, up on uh, you know, and make this whole line just to avoid the traffic because otherwise we're stuck in there. So um now it's not, the traffic issue is not a concern personally with regards to Maimonides, that I'm very happy that they have accommodated so uh perfectly our needs and our concerns. They have, they have been addressed. Um my concern is about Fortieth Avenue, and I just listened to uh Mr. Stuart Robertson, and because I had not, I was not aware of what was going on, what was going to happen, I could not ask uh any questions uh with regards to any improvements on Fortieth Avenue. Maybe, I I I don't know. So now that is my question. And um.
What what project are you referring to other than Maimonides?
I don't know the name of the project, uh but it's like about a block away from from Maimonides uh uh towards um Sterling Road. A few, like about a block or two before Sterling Road, there's like a development, um a a a community. And I think it's also about ninety units, and it just kind of like popped up overnight.
Um Richard Lorber, is that the Oaks? Or I'm sorry, Corinne?
Yeah, it's the Dana Oaks Townhouse Project she's referring to.
Okay, that happened a while ago, maybe a a few years ago, and there there was a lot of public input. I'm I'm not sure um how involved you were at that time, but there there was a lot of public input, a lot of public came to express their opinions on that, and um that project passed. That may have been two years ago, maybe. I I'm not sure.
Um Mike, again, my concern is that we have, we're going to literally slightly almost double uh the traffic due to Maimonides. I'm not going to say anything because they did what they had to do, and they accommodated our needs. So uh but it's not about Maimonides. It's about um the traffic, it's about the road, it it's about Fortieth Avenue. We went to uh the City of Hollywood. No, we went to um the construction site, and they said, no, it's not Hollywood. It's um Dana Beach. So it's like, we feel like we have a bouncing ball going back and forth, and we are in the middle because we are the affected ones.
Right. Corinne, can you um let Marjorie know some of the improvements that the NPO? Uh it seems like it's been forever since that project was supposed to come um before us, or for us to see it. I know we approved it several years ago. Could you explain to her some of those improvements that's going to happen on Fortieth?
Yes, thank you, um Mayor. So um I I was going to also mention um that property owners within four hundred and fifty feet of that site were mailed notices. I suspect that you live further than that from the project. Um since then, we have expanded our notice requirements. We now notify property owners within a thousand feet. But again, I'm not even sure you're within that thousand feet, and you would have got noticed. But like the mayor said, we did have multiple public hearings on the project. Um also, Southwest Fortieth Avenue is um a trafficway. It's on the Broward County Trafficway Plan, so which means that any improvements on that roadway is not um city decision to be made. It's the Broward County NPO makes those decisions. And so that they do monitor um the roadways, and they have um roadway improvement projects and five-year, ten-year projects because roads are typically expensive, so they have a longer planning horizon for their improvements. Um as the mayor said, there are improvements um that should be um implemented on Southwest Fortieth with regards to sidewalk, pedestrian, bicycle tra- lanes on that roadway. They, there was not an expansion planned um for additional lanes, but there were some, you know, improvements in the swell areas for sidewalks, for bike lanes. I know that there was also discussion for improvements at the intersection of Fortieth and Griffin Road. I think that we were also in conversations about improvements at Sterling and Fortieth as well, um to try to improve that, those movements there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the last question is, so actually I reminded, when are you going to replace the, this is for Maimonides. When are you going to replace um the trees and the bushes? I'm not gonna let that go.
Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Yes, and good for you. Don't let it go.
No, I'm 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 glad you asked. Um so uh we have trees replaced along Fortieth. We also have the new line of trees to put in along the northern property line, and we have agreed to do those plantings early in the construction process for our new project. So if we're successful this evening, uh then uh we have the approvals that we have to get at the county for the plat. And after that, we will be into the city immediately for permits for construction on the property, including planting those trees along Fortieth and along the northern property line early in the construction process.
Thank you so much. I let the birds know that they can come back.
Okay, thank you.
Other um member of the public here to speak for or against nine point three and nine point four, they're both related. Seeing as there are none, um do we want to discuss the art in public places before or after? Okay, well.
I'm sorry, the art, um the art waiver request is part of item nine point three. So you could, you could make a motion on nine four, but it needs to be a conversation with nine three.
Awesome. So let's tackle that now. Um do we have a motion one way or the other?
Make a motion to approve nine point four?
Nine point three, we're at nine point three, um Commissioner Llewellyn, and we have to talk about the.
I thought Corinne just said we could approve nine point four and then come back and discuss nine point three.
Well, she said that the arts was a condition of nine point three, but if nine point three doesn't pass, I don't think it matters for nine point four. So let's just discuss the art. All right.
May I, Mayor?
Yes. Yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Uh yeah, I mean, um I think that um Dennis should um I'd like to see art in the place, have the money to the art in the place, and have go to the city.
Wait, we kind of understand.
But if they feel.
Hold on, let's try it again.
Hear me now.
Yes.
I said, I think that, you know, I would like to to collect the thirty-five thousand dollars. If the school is willing to put the seventeen thousand five hundred into controlled art through Corinne, like she mentioned, I would have no objection with splitting the money up. But if the school does not want to put art inside of that, then I would recommend that we would take the thirty-five thousand to the art fund. So that's, I guess Dennis will answer that question, and we can maybe make that decision.
Got it. Dennis, are you okay with um paying half and then doing an art project inside of the school with the uh as for the?
Inside the school. Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the school property. You didn't mean inside the building.
On the school property, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Not in the cafeteria.
Let me, I want to make sure I understand the question, but if the question is as I understand it, it's a thirty-five thousand dollar total. You could do art on the property. It's gotta be visible from the street, right? It can't be inside where nobody can see it. That would be a seventeen thousand five hundred dollar expense. We would do that, if that's the question, you know.
That's the question.
Put it in rather than pay money. So we would put it in.
Oh, so he would like to see it's on the property and the other half in the art fund.
So for, so Vice Mayor, for a total of what number?
Thirty-five thousand, if it's required.
All right, let me, I want to, I want to.
I'm just, I'm just asking you for the option. Do you want to put, would your uh with the sure uh the school like to put the art on, you know, like in the uh the schoolyard or uh around the building outside when people drive in, they can see art, and they're making, instead of like it being so plain looking, would you like to take, put seventeen thousand five hundred into that area and the seventeen thousand five hundred into the art fund, or do you want us to take the whole thirty-five thousand and put it in the art fund?
I think that we would like to do the seventeen thousand on the property and then just pay the difference to the city.
I'm okay with that, if the commission's okay with that.
I see everyone shaking their head. So that is into the motion of nine point three. Do we have a motion for nine point three? Corinne, I see your hand raised. Is that old?
Well, no, that's new. Um what I'm thinking is that basically they're asking for the waiver of participation. So basically, it sounds like the commission is denying the waiver request.
Yes.
And 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 in the end, they can choose, you know, as any other project, how they want to participate. But if you guys want to nail that down tonight, that's good, too.
Well, and and I was gonna say the same thing, that if you deny the waiver request, we have the option under the code of either doing half of it on the property and paying the other half, or just paying the whole thing. So I think if you just deny the request, we can just do it either way. Either do a half on the site or do it all or do it or pay it all.
Make a motion, we deny the request.
And to approve nine point three, or do you want to do them separately? Vice Mayor?
Whatever you want. You can do whatever way you want, Mayor.
You should probably combine it.
I'd like to combine it.
So is your, your motion is to approve nine point three and deny the waiver of request?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Call the role, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodman?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Savino?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Do we have um item nine point four is is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this, please show your hands now. Okay, I see none. Do we have a motion and a second for that item?
Motion to approve nine point four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, item nine point five?
The resolution of the City of Danube, Florida approving the appeal request for applications SPO oh seven dash twenty site plan and VAO seven eight dash twenty variance submitted by BNB Investment Solutions LLC, owner thirty-three twenty-one Southwest Forty-four Street, Dana Beach, providing for conflicts for the providing for an effective date continued from both the February twenty-three and March twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one city commission meetings.
Good evening, Commissioners. Corinne LeJoy, Assistant Director, Community Development. Um again, this is an appeal of a um of a site plan that was denied by the Planning and Zoning Board, which is why they're here. They're appealing it to the City Commission. So I feel I have a presentation prepared to walk you through the site plan and all the 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 components of that site plan. But I um, this item has been continued on um numerous occasions and to, before we got to this evening, at the request of the applicant to allow him to continue working with the residents, the neighbors in that area. And I'm happy to report that attorney, I'm stealing his thunder, is um has, is here with a letter of support from those residents with conditions um that we're identifying in the resolution as well. So I can go through this presentation, walk you through, so you're, so you are familiar with the site plan itself. Frank, if you can load that presentation for me.
Also tell me why um it was denied by planning.
Yes. Yes, I will. So the 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 applicant, as I said, is is appealing the Planning and Zoning Board denial that occurred in November eighteenth. It was denied by a four-one vote. Um I'm going ahead without my presentation. Um at that meeting, six members of the public spoke. Thank you. I'm on slide two. Thank you. Six members of the public spoke in opposition citing um the density, drainage, existing trees as reasons that they were against the project. Um Board Member Grace stated that she couldn't support the project in a community where the existing residents weren't supportive of the project because that's where they lived, raised their family, and paid tax. They were really sensitive to that community input that they received at the meeting. The motion was then made by um Board Member Grace to deny the item, and it was seconded by um Vice Chair Tony Sorani at that time, and it was passed four one to deny the project. So thank you. Then um, I'm sorry, the next slide. The applicant is utilizing the city's land development regulations, Article um six fifteen, which allows for appeals, which is how we got to the City Commission. The City Commission may reverse or affirm wholly or in part, or may modify the older requirement, decision, or determination appealed from, and may make such order required decision or determination as sought to be made, and to that end shall have the powers of the official to whom the appeal is taken. So um concurrent vote of three members of the City Commission is necessary to reverse any order, requirement, decision, or determination of any administrative office or to decide in favor of the applicant upon the matter which is being requested tonight. The City Commission review is de novo, meaning reviewing the application anew, and will determine if the comprehensive plan and land development requirements are met. The appeal of the City Commission decision, um if the applicant wanted to appeal the City Commission's decision tonight, that appeal would end up in Circuit Court because they've exhausted the city's um appeal processes. The next slide um is the aerial photo showing the location of the project and our one-thousand-foot notification radius. This project does back up to the Dana Canal, as you can see in that um photo. Um the next slide. Um the applicant's requesting a site plan and a variance for the approval and construction of nine townhomes on the project. The requested variance is to waive the sidewalk requirement in order to provide additional storm water capacity in the swell as requested by the neighbors. However, the site plan can stand alone. Even if the variance is denied, the site plan can still be constructed and does not need variance approval. Um this also on this slide is a rendering of um what those, some of those, the frontage of those buildings will look like. The next slide talks about the variance request for the sidewalk. So as part of that application, the um applicant submitted the variance request to waive the installation of the sidewalk. The request is the result of discussions between the applicant and the neighbors who expressed preference for extra drainage infrastructure along the right-of-way and installation of street trees strategically placed to discourage parking. The applicant agreed to modify the plans and provide the additional drainage and street trees, but it necessitates the variance. The applicant believes that the request is not detrimental to the community and therefore um and there are no existing sidewalks that this sidewalk segment would connect to. So um we see no objection to that variance request. The next slide. The applicant did submit written justification identifying how the requests are consistent with the city's variance criteria. Staff also provided our analysis in the staff report for the criteria, and we're in support of the variance request. The next slide addresses the site plan of those nine townhomes. There is something unique on the property in that there's a fifty-foot canal easement along the north end of the property where where it butts the water. So no buildings can be placed in that fifty feet, and the applicant's been able to keep the buildings out of that area. There is a lift station on the um southeast corner of the property that will remain. The proposed townhomes include a one-car garage and two external parking spaces. Um the sound mitigation will also be installed because they're required to maintain um the forty-five um internal decibel levels because of the proximity to the airport. They are proposing roof sun decks for five units that are facing the water. Um they are not proposing them on all nine units. That was something that was also negotiated between the applicant and the property owners. So those four units along the west end of the property will not have those um roof decks in order to provide additional privacy for those adjacent homes. The next slide. Um the applicant's proposing to retain seventeen trees on their site um in their current location, relocating uh one additional tree on the site. Originally, that relocation number was higher, but this was something that was also negotiated with the neighbors and the applicants responding to the neighbor's request. The site plan shows sixty-five new trees being installed, twenty-nine, which exceed the minimum fourteen-foot height at time of planting um that's required for shade, so they'll actually be taller than the minimum required. The applicant has also been able to lower the mitigation fee that they'll be paying to the city but by providing extra buffering and screening on the property, also as a result of talking to the neighbors. Therefore, the mitigation that they'll be paying into the city's tree trust fund is nineteen thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars. Um the next slide is a um the drawing of the site plan itself. They are proposing nine townhomes. They have an acre lot. They could um by code, they're allowed ten units, but they're only proposing nine um as, you know, in response to trying to limit the density on the site, um was one of the big concerns of those residents as well. The next slide I provided is, um, the landscape plan, just showing you, um, the placement of all those, um, trees. They're concentrated on the perimeter of the property to provide the maximum buffering. Some of the larger trees are outlined in a dash line. Those are some of the trees that are existing and will remain on the site. I know the, the applicant worked a lot with the neighbors on this landscape plan. Um, next slide, please. So I kind of went through the, the history of this in, um, June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. The Planning and Zoning Board denied the application. The city commission, um, after that point, the city commission approved several changes to the land development code and the regulations to the RM one and two zoning districts for townhouse developments in order to address some of the concerns that was raised by this project. Primarily to provide additional open space and setbacks between neighboring properties and new townhouse projects. So some of those changes that the staff made to the code during this time was to, um, we increased the minimum lot requirement from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five foot minimum. We increased the required lot depth for townhomes from one hundred to a hundred and fifty foot minimum. Uh, we reduced the height from thirty-five feet to thirty feet. The lot coverage, um, was reduced from forty to thirty-five feet. The interior side setback requirements, um, we increased to a fifteen-foot minimum, twenty-foot total. And the rear setbacks, we also increased from fifteen to twenty. And this was in, as a result of the conversations we had with the residents asking for additional open space between these types of projects and their existing homes. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval of those text amendments in December. Um, and the city, um, commission approved it with a resolution in January. The applicant, um, the present application has been reviewed consistent with these new, um, text amendments and the new land, and our new regulations that were approved. Um, the next slide talks about the public outreach. I'm sure the applicant, uh, is going to be speaking more to that. They've, he's had extensive, um, you know, communication with the residents, which is why we've continued the item, um, a couple of times. Um, the next slide. Um, here we talk about some of the changes that were made as a result of some of the communication that was going on between the previous attorney on the project and the residents. And that includes, you know, the additional drainage and swale component which necessitated the variance. It talks about the, um, installation of the street trees. The landscape plan is something that they worked on extensively. They revised the plan to show walls on the east and west side of the project. Um, they revised the plans to remove handicap parking spaces near the entrance and installed standard parking spaces. So with removal of one handicap, you were able to install two regular parking spaces, which was a concern for the residents. Um, and they revised the plans to raise, um, the wall to six feet on the outside of the two sundex. So, um, the, the roof terraces, they increased the parapet height so that there was, um, more privacy for the adjacent properties. The next slide talks about the D R C review. Um, the project is a site plan. It went through D R C review in February, April and August, um, all in two thousand twenty. The, um, the, um, all of the disciplines reviewed it, fire, public services, cities, um, engineering consultant. They accepted the traffic statement that was provided by the applicant. There are some outstanding D R C comments that remain, but there'll be conditions of approval identified in the resolution if it's approved this evening. And the final slide, um, is going to be our recommendation. So the Planning and Zoning Board in November eighteenth of two thousand twenty denied the site plan as we discussed. The city commission previous actions, actually, this is, um, I think there's an additional date where the commission actually continued the item. But that comes to the staff's recommendation that we're, the proposed site plan meets all of the city's zoning regulations related to the building placement, use, mass and density, and requires no special exceptions or waivers. The request to waive the sidewalk requirement would enable installation of additional drainage and street trees. Therefore, staff's recommending approval of the, the appeal and therefore the site plan and variance applications with the outstanding D R C comments as conditions of approval to be addressed prior to the issuance of a permit. And I know the applicant, the attorney for the applicant is present and has a presentation to make as well to you, but I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Um, does the applicant want to make a presentation? Jeremy, do you want to make a presentation? Okay, go ahead.
Right.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, Frank, if you can load his presentation.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks, Corinne. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Jeremy Shear with Becker and Pauli Koff, representing Palms by the Water. Um, so I'm gonna walk you through, well, first of all, I'm very happy to announce, as, as Corinne already did, that we do have an agreement with the, uh, adjacent neighbors. Uh, it's the fruit of many months of discussions and, you know, um, you know, really listening to what they had to say. And, you know, I, you know, I'm happy to report that, you know, I think we can even say that we're friends at this point. Um, you know, it's a very special neighborhood and, um, it was, it was really, you know, um, interesting and, and fun to, to get to this point. I don't know if we can zoom in on it, um, a little bit, Frank. Uh, I was able to from, from my end, but are you able to zoom in on that a little bit? Because the text is a little bit small. I'll, I'll try. Just bear with me and keep going. Sure. Um, alright, so let me walk you through, uh, if you can go back. Yeah, thanks. If you can go back there. Uh, just some of the, um, you know, major changes that we've made. Um, you know, uh, in regards to our discussions, uh, with the neighbors. And, uh, you know, the, the first major change, thank you so much. Uh, don't really have the best eyesight, but, uh, as you can see, I'm wearing glasses, but, uh, that was about a six font right there. Um, so the first major change is in regards to the perimeter buffer wall. We initially started out with a four-foot fence, then it was raised to a four-foot wall. Uh, and now we're at a six-foot wall, precast concrete. Um, it's going to be, uh, based on the design of, uh, the perimeter buffer wall in the Montero community. If any of you are familiar with that in Cooper City, uh, and that, you know, was, uh, you know, uh, from the feedback we got from the neighbors. Uh, and I'll actually sho- show you a picture of that later on. Um, the five units in the rear of the property were combined into one building. Initially, there were two buildings, but they were combined into one building, uh, in order to add an additional five feet of setback to the east side setback uh, for a total of fifteen feet. Um, and then units three and four facing the western property boundary. Uh, additionally, we're moved five feet into the, uh, property, so raising the setback from fifteen to twenty feet. Uh, Frank, if you can move on to the next slide, please. Excellent, thank you. Um, so continuing with some of the changes to the site plan. Um, as Corinne mentioned, um, units one through four, initially, we had rooftop decks. We've completely removed them, um, you know, so that we increase the privacy. Um, I guess that would be for the western neighbor. Um, and then on the five units at the rear of the property facing the canal, um, we are going to install six-foot walls, um, at the end of the roof deck and a six-foot wall at the end of the balcony for both of the end units. So that the units that are, um, adjacent to the, uh, you know, uh, adjacent properties. And they're gonna be constructed of the same material as that used for the townhomes. Um, and then additionally, um, the rooftop decks that we'll have at the five units at the rear, um, they're only gonna be, uh, a portion of the roof, uh, facing the canal, uh, for additional privacy. It's not gonna be the entire roof. Um, and then additionally, uh, as far as the color of the townhomes, we agreed to, you know, prior to building permit, we will, you know, work with the adjacent neighbors and make sure that we all agree on a color. I know that my clients, Joe and Stefan, would prefer a gray color. Um, but, you know, definitely, it's gonna be something that's compatible with the neighborhood and we're gonna make sure that, you know, we, we gain the approval and consent of the, uh, the neighbors. Um, as Corinne mentioned, yes, the landscaping was very important to the adjacent neighbors. Um, so I'm just gonna walk you through some of the, uh, main changes. Um, so, yeah, I mean, the only reason it even had to initially come to the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, was because of the fact that we're not going to be doing this sidewalk. It would be a sidewalk that just ends at the property boundaries, you know, wouldn't go anywhere. Um, and so it's gonna be for drainage. It's actually gonna improve the drainage on the site. Um, and it's gonna prevent cars from parking there illegally. Um, so we're gonna be, uh, planting, uh, four Simpson stopper trees there. Um, uh, and then on the western boundary, uh, you know, we worked with, uh, Barbara, the western property owner. And we're gonna install twelve-foot tall arica palms, running all the way, uh, not all the way to the seawall, but all the way to the existing trees. Um, uh, which run to the seawall. Um, and, uh, and then, uh, behind, on Forty-fourth Street, behind the four Simpson stoppers, we're gonna have two additional Simpson stoppers, two Vacha palms, four live oaks. Um, and, and then actually in front of the building that's facing Forty-fourth Street, we're gonna have an additional, um, row of arica palms. Um, and then as far as the eastern property boundary, uh, initially, we had, you know, trees number five and fifteen. We're gonna be royal palms, which were gonna be transported, um, from the front of the property to the rear. But, um, actually, uh, funnily enough, uh, there's a landscape architect, you know, um, uh, Sam's husband, Philip is a landscape architect. So we discussed it with him and with Sam and we ended up on Dahoon Hollies, which are native trees that can help with privacy and we're gonna make sure that we plant them, um, at a mature height so that they provide blockage, um, from the time of planting. Um, and then additionally, on the eastern, uh, perimeter, uh, we had initially replaced it with arica palms. Um, you know, Sam and Philip said, oh, well, we prefer something else, so we decided on six-foot tall Simpson stoppers. Um, that's gonna replace, uh, the arica palms we had there before as well as the Fakahachi grass. Uh, if you can move on to the next slide, please. Thank you so much. Um, so additional conditions of approval, uh, in speaking with the staff and, and speaking, you know, with the city, with the neighbors. We understand it's very important, um, that there's a concern over short-term rentals. So we are voluntarily, um, adding as a condition of approval that short-term rentals will be prohibited. Uh, in addition to that, um, you know, we agree that we will form a homeowners association. I think that's gonna be much better to foment that sense of community. And as I mentioned, it really is a very special neighborhood, so, uh, you know, hopefully this'll, you know, fit in and, you know, everybody will have some nice new neighbors. Um, you know, we're gonna take good faith industry stranded, standard measures to mitigate dust and debris. Any issues that can come directly to us, uh, come, you know, to the city and we'll be there. We'll fix it right away. Um, there's also a beehive on the property. Actually, I think there's two beehives, uh, from the site visit. Um, uh, would be nice to have some native honey, uh, on the site, but seems like everybody wants to get rid of it. So we're gonna work with urban beekeepers and, uh, and remove, uh, the beehive there. Um, and then if you can move on to the next slide. Uh, this is just the signature page of, uh, my client and the two adjacent neighbors. Uh, and then you can move on to the, to the next slide, please. Great. So, uh, just wanted to, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. I mean, it's a little bit hard to see. Um, but yeah, I mean, you know, at the bottom part of it here, um, you know, you can see that it's the six-foot wall. I mean, I guess you probably can't see my cursor. Um, but yeah, uh, if you move a little bit up. There you go. Okay. Um, so on the very, I guess, right side of the page, running north and south, um, you'll see where the sidewalk would have been. Um, but instead, we're gonna have, you know, the drainage area and the four Simpson stopper trees. Um, if you can see the four units facing to the west, um, the units that are more into the interior of the property were moved five feet in, as you can see. Um, you know, the perimeter buffer, you can't really see it, but it runs around, you know, the entire property. It's gonna be six-foot high, precast concrete. Um, and then the five units to the rear, um, you know, initially, there were two buildings, but we combined them, uh, to increase five feet of setback to the eastern property boundary. Um, you can probably see, you know, the hatched area, that's, you know, on, on these five units. So that is not gonna have a rooftop deck. Um, in addition to that, um, forgot to mention, but the four units, uh, facing to the western property also absolutely no rooftop decks. Um, and then you can see here at the, I guess, the bottom left portion of the site, it's gonna be a beautiful, uh, um, rooftop, um, or, or beautiful, um, you know, wooden, uh, walkway out to the, uh, out to the, uh, canal. If you can go on to the next slide, please. Yep. I'm not even gonna try there. Um, that's just too hard to see. But, uh, as I had mentioned, uh, in the agreement, we agreed to many, many landscape changes. Uh, next one, please. Thank you very much. So this is an example of the design for the precast buffer wall. This is the buffer wall in the Montero community in Cooper City. Um, you know, we offered many options. We discussed a lot about it and we feel, uh, you know, in working with the neighbors, that this is the best option. And finally, uh, my favorite slide, the last slide, if you can pull that up, please. Uh, this is a rendering from the view of the canal. Uh, this is just my favorite slide. Um, I just love this rendering and you can see, there's gonna be nine slips, each of them assigned to, to the units. They each have their own, you know, backyards. Um, and, uh, you, you know, you can see just the facade, uh, facing towards, towards the water. Obviously, we didn't include all the landscaping here, so you can better see the facades. Um, but yeah, that's, that's it. You know, we are asking that all of the conditions, um, in the agreement be incorporated as conditions of approval um, as well. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone, could you, thank you. Is there anyone of the commission that wishes to speak on this? Okay, 'cause I have, I have some concerns and questions. Um, I see that you have four of those residents. I think that you met with, um, Jeremy. Um, I think last week, when I tried to be on the phone with you and video chat and everything else. I, after that call, you know, I did my due diligence and, um, I was also sent an email that kind of said that some of the residents were left out of it, that only those four residents, and I don't know if there's two households or four households, were, um, signed in agreement with you and everyone else was kind of left out. Um, I also spoke to some residents who said that you were threatening them, that you can also just, um, sue the city if we denied. And they also named another elected official that they said they consulted with. And that the connected official told them, if we deny, um, let me quote. The developers can sue if the city, can sue the city if denied and ultimately will win in an appeal. And I found that very disturbing. Um, so, uh, Jeanette, who has been very instrumental with staff, she, she was not involved in this half of it. I know I asked where she was and you said that, uh, you don't know why she was there, um, that you were sure that the neighbors were going to tell her. That a lot of those neighbors were, were left out of, I, I guess, the agreement that they signed. And then I had a few residents send me emails that have the agreement, that said that they did sign an agreement with you and they just make sure that those conditions were a part of our decision. That, um, so it is set in stone. And so I'm not very happy. I'm not, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm not very happy with, with hearing all of it. I'm not very happy that only a couple of residents signed an agreement with you and, and the rest of the neighborhood was left out. I spoke to a couple of residents who did not want to speak about it. They didn't want to be involved with the drama. They were against the project and then they were kind of confused with some of the other residents, um, having an agreement with you or not. So, uh, I, 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 I can tell you that I am, I'm not happy with, with what I've heard. And I know that some of it is true because, uh, for convenience, that has been thrown around a lot. If we deny, you can sue. I, I, that is so old to me. Either we're gonna approve or deny a project, and you're gonna go sue or not. No one has sued the cities, as far as I know, um, in denial of a project, as far as I've been here. And that, that has just been a, uh, tossed around phrase for a very long time. So I am disappointed and I, I am very upset with the emails and the conversations that I have had with the other residents who aren't Barbara Ted and Samantha and Phil, 'cause I know that those are the four residents that have an agreement with you, right?
Uh, well, Mayor, would you allow me the opportunity to respond?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So, um, yeah, you know, um, you know, Barbara and Sam are the adjacent neighbors. Um, so obviously, they're the ones who are gonna be most impacted. So obviously, you know, they were the ones who we spent, you know, the most amount of time, uh, communicating with. Uh, as far as the meeting on site, um, I believe there were about eight or nine other residents from the neighborhood who attended. I mean, it was a very, you know, let's say friendly encounter. Um, you know, they came away from it, you know, I think, you know, I don't wanna, you know, put words into their mouths, but I think that they were, you know, happy with the meeting and, and, you know, it was just a friendly environment. Uh, I mean, we didn't approach the other neighbors, um, for an agreement because, you know, once again, um, you know, it's the adjacent neighbors who are gonna be most affected. Um, so those were the, you know, neighbors who, you know, we spent most of the time, uh, working with. As far as, you know, Jeanette goes, you know, I, I know that, you know, one of her requests was, uh, to put Arika palms, you know, running the entire length of, of forty-fourth street. You know, we weren't able to accommodate that because of the other trees that we have there, especially, you know, the Simpson stoppers. But we did add Arika palms, running the length of the building facing forty-fourth street. You know, as far as threats of litigation and so on and so forth, I mean, please don't put words in my mouth, I certainly didn't say that. You know, all of my communications, uh, with the neighbors have been very friendly and respectful. I mean, that's, that's the way I comport myself. Even if there's a disagreement, I always treat everybody with respect. And certainly, you know, we, we never threatened anybody with litigation. It was always, how can we make this better? How can we fit into the neighborhood? But yeah, I mean, you know, we, we had the meeting. There were about eight other residents besides the adjacent neighbors there, um, that wasn't the request of, uh, uh, of another, uh, neighbor who did attend the meeting. And, uh, and, you know, we do have an agreement with the adjacent neighbors. I mean, it would be very difficult to accommodate other neighbors who aren't directly adjacent, um, to the site. So that's where we spent the majority of our, of our time.
I'll just say that it is, it is possible to, um, accommodate an entire community, because we've seen it done with the estates of Fort Lauderdale, and they have a much larger community. And they were able to have all of the residents, you know, uh, come and speak in support of it, when they had all of the residents initially very against the, the project. So I do think it's, it is a way to accommodate all of, it's, except for two, two houses or a date, adjacent neighbors to, um, the impact of community is gonna be more than just the two adjacent neighbors, and there's a way to accommodate that. Commissioner Davis?
Um, I would like to say for the record, um, two of the neighbors, that's a husband and wife, contacted me prior to this agreement. They were the ones who were being directly affected by it, and they were completely against it at the beginning. And so, you know, I, you know, invited them to come to the commission meeting and speak on it and, and have their voices heard. But prior to this meeting, I did receive an email, was it, uh, either yesterday or the day before, that just said that we have come to an agreement with the developer, and we are no longer, you know, um, seeking, we've come to an agreement, and, and we're okay with, with the changes that we had. I have not heard anything else about, you know, any, any other elected officials or any other, you know, threats or anything like that. But I did wanna put on the record for the people who I had spoken to and the people who were directly against it, uh, who, who were being directly affected by the project, came to me and were very satisfied with the way that you worked with them and worked to get this agreement done. So I just wanna say, you know, the part that I know, uh, to be true in this instance. So thank you for working at least with the people who were dead-set against it, and, and it affected them. Was there a better way to incorporate more people, probably? But I know that this has probably been going on for over a year or more, maybe more like two, so, and it was not easy to get those people to budge. So, um, I, I just want to add that, because I think it's very important to, 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 to let the public know that there were people who were very dead-set against it, who, who have changed their tune. So that's, that's all I have to add for this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Any comments? Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes, um, thank you. And I, and I know Jeremy, I know you've been working very hard with the, with the residents, and I know they've been having multiple meetings with you on a regular basis. The other resident, the, the two, um, uh, residents, the, the two sets of residents, one on either side of the parcel, those are the ones that I believe are the ones who signed this, and they were the most directly impacted by this. Um, and I have actually heard from the number of the residents, uh, that live around that have also been very involved in the negotiations on this, who said basically that, um, they were primarily concerned, although they were concerned for themselves, they were really concerned about the people that live right next door on either side, and that they were, um, if, if they were comfortable with it, then they would be comfortable with it as well. So that's what I've been hearing, and, um, and I, and I do appreciate that, so, um, thank you.
Thank you. Any, Commissioner Otman?
To say, this one's tough. I, I, I wasn't in support of this project previously. Last time, uh, it was around, and when I spoke to the, the two gentlemen and to you, Jeremy, you know, I, I said, um, for me, you have to get some buy-in from the community, and that's what I was looking for. So, you know, it's tough when you hear these things that, you know, some people may have been left out purposely, and, you know, I, I don't know what to make, make of that, other than to say that, I, you know, I wish those people would have been vocal, because the only people I heard from were the, the ones, you know, that I guess we all heard from, uh, the ones on the adjacent side, that said they were, they were happy. You know, you, you did what I asked you to do, I guess. And, you know, I, I'm not in love with the project, but, uh, that's not what the point is. The point was, uh, to get community buy-in. And to the extent that you, you, you did, you accomplished that, so, um, you know, good on you. And, and also just, you know, the comment that, uh, don't be selective in your commissioners that you talk to. If you hate a project, uh, you know, email everyone, let everyone know. It doesn't do an, any of us any good if only some people know. You have to be vocal about, uh, you know, if, if you're in favor of a project or not in favor of a project, none of us are mind readers. But from the information I have, most of the people are happy, so, if they're happy, then I'm, I'm happy with the project, or can at least support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone to speak for or against this project? Being as we have no one, do we have a, um, motion?
Make a motion, Mayor, to pass, uh, line nine point five.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
I just wanna confirm, um, whether, I don't know if it's Tom or Corinne, that, that agreement that they have, the letter that, that we just went over, that's gonna be incorporated into this resolution, so that it's enforceable?
Yes, we'll add it as a condition.
Okay. That's why I wanna make sure. Then I'll second the motion.
Call the roll, please. I see a hand. Sorry. It happened last minute. Barbara Ringstad?
Um, I just wanted to state that, um, a lot of the name, oh, sorry.
sworn in, and then you'll have to state your name and address for the record, and then you can speak.
Thank you.
The testimony you give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, and then you have.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Ringstad, thirty-three, forty-one, southwest forty-fourth, I'm next door to the property, to the west side, and yes, I have, through the whole thing, been very against it, but came to grips with the fact that these things are gonna happen, and they did work with us, and most of the neighbors did say to myself, my husband, and Sam, and Phil, the other adjacent neighbors, that they were gonna stand behind us. So, um, we didn't leave, purposely ever leave anybody out, and everybody was invited to the walkthrough with the property, so that's all I wanna say. And I appreciate all of the commissioners with the letters I've sent, and I appreciate all of you, we're trying to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So we have a motion in a second, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Otman?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor James?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Next, we have, um, discussion of possible action. We have an update from Commissioner Otman.
Oh, boy, all right. All right. Can you guys hear me okay? So, um, this update is, the context of it is, we were discussing what to do about, um, reopening our meetings, to being in-person, uh, having the public there, or whatever variation of that we wanted to do. So the numbers that I have for you for the last, um, first, we'll look at Broward County. So in Broward County, um, in the last two weeks, they have been about eight, uh, six hundred cases a day. They are down from the two weeks previous, which were at about eight hundred, averaging about eight hundred cases per day. So slight, very slightly down. When we look at Dana, Dana Beach, Dana Beach, as following most of the trajectory of Florida, has continued to go up slightly. There's been no, um, no alarming increases for Dana Beach, but our number, our, uh, total number for Dana Beach hovers at around seventeen hundred. For, and remember that it's, it's not a perfect number because of our overlapping, uh, zip codes, but some, somewhere around there. So there's been no significant decreases and no alarming increases. As you heard, um, our representative, uh, Ryan say, there's, you know, it, we can now vaccinate something up to ten thousand people, uh, a day. That doesn't mean that that many people are getting vaccinated. You may have also seen, uh, I think it was from our city manager, that one of our churches was a, approved for, uh, to do vaccinations over there. Again, that doesn't mean that people are going to be getting vaccinated. You know, there, there's, there's pretty, uh, ample opportunity for people to, to get vaccinated, and at this point, uh, you know, I'm sure you, you've read different things about maybe it's leveling off, or is that a tipping point? And we'll see where that goes, whether people, a, a lot of people continue to get vaccinated or not. But I don't have numbers specific for our areas, for our area in terms of how many people in Dana Beach, um, have been getting vaccinated. So with that said, I looked at what Hollywood and Fort Lauderdale are doing. They're doing sort of a hybrid where, um, they have, uh, in Fort Lauderdale, they have, uh, two commissioners, the mayor and a commissioner, um, uh, in person on the dais, and then the other ones are from home. Hollywood, same sort of thing, maybe there's two or three, uh, commissioners on the dais, and then the other ones are at home. And it seems to just be based on who was comfortable doing in-person, uh, meetings versus who wanted to remain at home. And then for the seating, i- it seemed like it was mostly, uh, people who were presenting, uh, very, very little in terms of allowing the, the public to come in, because that's gonna be a real challenge, right? We don't have a very large, uh, chambers. So you would want to, you know, maintain six-foot distance, uh, from the people, the, the different groups of people, only families would be allowed to sit together, or people who came together could sit together. But generally, the advisement from the CDC is that you still don't have, um, indoor gatherings. So you would wanna keep it very, very limited. So my recommendation would be, if we wanted to do in-person meetings, if the members of the commission wanted to do it and be in-person, that's fine, but that we limited it to commission and/or staff, um, I, I wouldn't recommend allowing, at this point, any of the public in, to, to be at the meeting, because it's with staff. And assuming all the commissioners wanting to, you would have too large of a gathering, and that would violate the, the CDC recommendation. You can also go and you can find out specifically, based upon what our fire capacity is, like what the official capacity is that's given by, uh, when fire, I guess, uh, tells you how many people you can have in the chamber. You can look at that, and you could, um, you can find out really an exact number of what would be the, the safe amount of people who have in there. So that would be my recommendation, commissioner, and staff only.
Go ahead, um, city attorney, I know he had something.
I, I, I just, I just don't wanna see us in the position of denying the public the ability to come and only allowing presenters. That is gonna pose a problem. So I think we've talked about, if you do want to have the public come and the presenters, that they come, but it's on a first-come, first-served basis, knowing the safety, you know, and people would be warned in advance, that you'll have to sign up early if you wish to come, but they'll have to be separated from each other, other than as Commissioner Otman said about family members allowing to be together. But I don't think we should bar them. So if you wanna wait another month, I mean, that's, this is the discussion you will now have.
If them comes, and I understand what you're saying, Tom, comes from, because you have that CDC recommendation of you don't wanna create an indoor gathering. So because our chambers are so small, I mean, uh, like, once all, let's say, you say all staff came, and all commissioners came, uh, and, and you had the presenters, you'd be allowing probably six or seven visit, uh, visitors, at, at the most, that I can see.
Well, y- you wouldn't really have to have the staff here, that, you know, they can, they can attend remotely. It's however you wish to do it, but I, I would encourage you to allow the public to attend up to the limit that it's safe, if they wish to attend.
Oh, I, I understand. I'm just telling you that the challenge is doing that within the CDC.
Absolutely, absolutely, sir.
That's really been our guiding force this whole time, from everything, from the mask mandate to teleworking, to everything, is that we said we're gonna follow CDC guidelines, so.
Another thing, Tom, uh, I, I know that, um, Commissioner Otman said that in other cities, they're kinda having two, but, uh, by law, do we have, or by our ordinance or charter, do we have to have at least three, um, physically here?
Before COVID, that was an attorney general opinion, and all city attorneys throughout the state were observing that. Since we've been dealing with this, we've made a, a decision, along with a number of other city attorneys, that despite that, uh, attorney general opinion, we were not gonna have, put our people at risk, and that we could continue to do this virtually. So if you chose to do a hybrid, you don't physically have to have three people here. It'd be, it'd be preferable, but you don't have to have it, as long as we're still under these conditions.
Okay, thank you. I personally, I, I'm ready to go back to in-person meetings and maybe have a first-come, first-served, maybe have presenters, um, present virtually, and have the staff virtually, I don't know. But, uh, it seems like everything else is going back to normalcy. Our parks are opening up, you know, we, we, um, we are having gatherings outdoors, I know. But that's, that's my opinion. I don't know what everyone else feels. You can feel free to just speak. Go ahead, Commissioner Llewellyn.
I, I, I would just, my thought is, we're watching the numbers. The numbers do seem to be getting a little better. I do think that there are some improvements. The CDC is, is definitely making more and more frequent, um, recommendations, and they seem to be lifting some things. I think it would be, it would behoove everybody to just wait till the next meeting, and we discuss it at the next meeting, and maybe we can start with the last meeting in May, uh, to do live meetings, 'cause at that point, it might be at a better point in time, because more people will be vaccinated, and more people will feel, the CDC may feel more comfortable in allowing more restrictions to be lifted, and, and that's just my thought on it. Just, I don't see a point in, um, rushing to potentially become a, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't want us to create a super spreader, that, that's all.
Vice Mayor, Commissioner Davis, thoughts?
I think, um, I still think we should probably wait a little longer. I, I think these are better, I, I wouldn't mind if it was just us here, you know, we were together, but I understand Tom's situation too, and there's, you know, and if we were in there, um, you know, I mean, we're not six-foot apart, that presents a problem, and I don't wanna wear a mask when I'm in there. If I could, wouldn't not wear a mask, I'm okay with it. But if we have to wear masks and sit next to it for four hours with a mask on, that's, I don't, I can't take that. I don't feel good if I squeeze in a mask for four hours. But if I could not wear a mask, I'll be okay.
Commissioner Davis?
That's a big point, ma. I, I'd rather sit in a room by myself than try to breathe through a mask for four, five hours. That, that would not be okay with me. So, um, as soon as we can, we, we can speak publicly within our little cubicle or with, in our little glass case, then, then I'm, I'm ready to do that. If, if we can allow the public back safely, I know we were able to do that for the swearing-in and have people strategically placed, and just have just enough people in there to allow the meeting to go on, and if we can, uh, you know, ta- take our mask- And if we can, uh, you know, ta- take our masks off when we were talking. But for me, um, that, that's a, that's a big deal. Um, so if, if the management team feels like that they can safely put us in an environment where we can, um, perform our duties with the public when they feel that they can do that in a safe environment inside, then I'm ready to do that. If we need to wait another month until everybody feels good, I know I have another week and a half or so or two weeks before I get my second shot. I think a lot of people are in that area where I waited till the very last to be able to be vaccinated. And so I think you're, you're at a point where you're at, eh, eh, within a couple of weeks of most people at least having the opportunity, if you want to be vaccinated, to be able to be vaccinated and be able to have more safe indoor events. So, um, I'm going to leave it to the management team and if they feel that they can safely provide a, a, uh, indoor safe commission meeting.
All right, um, well, how about we wait another month? It doesn't seem like, uh, we have the support to kind of come back right now. So how about we wait another month and in that month, um, city manager, can you see what you could facilitate safely to bring us back something to possibly look at to decide yes or no at that time?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, awesome. Um, oh, Frank, come on, Director of Finance, with the utilities delinquency updates.
Okay, I'm going to give myself thirty seconds.
Right, I'll start, go.
Yeah, so this is just a follow-up to the conversation that we had a few weeks ago, the CRA board meeting. Uh, I thought it would be a good idea for us to have a very similar conversation, just to recap at the city commission meeting as well. And, um, really what it is, 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 and I, I brought up this, um, table again if you want to see it, but as you, as you've been told already, the, the delinquency rates, uh, for our water and sewer have skyrocketed since COVID because we, we're not doing shut offs. So, um, it's effectively, there's really no penalty or consequence for people who aren't paying their utility bill. So, um, we haven't been sending out delinquent notices. We really haven't been doing any kind of enforcement or collection actions on those balances. So, um, again, as a follow-up to the last conversation, um, we know there's some assistance programs out there. We know that maybe there's some mechanisms that allow people to, uh, pay their bill without it maybe, um, you know, worsening their financial situation that they're already in due to COVID. And what we'd like to do is at a minimum, start sending out the delinquent notices. But what we'd like to include with that is an insert, almost like a little flyer that says, here's how you can get help to pay your bill. Um, and put some resources on there and put some, you know, let them contact the, the utilities department and see whatever we can work out with them because our goal is really just to bring down that balance and bring down the delinquencies, at least just stop the bleeding and then start to reverse the trend as we continue out of this COVID pandemic. So, um, just wanted to get permission from, from, you know, just consensus among the, um, the commission that we can start sending out the delinquent notices. We don't have a date or we're not suggesting anytime soon yet that we would actually start shutting off customers for non-payment. We're just looking to start the conversation with individual account holders and start bringing them, um, into the conversation so we can, um, so we can start collecting on those accounts.
I have a question, Frank. Um, are any of the monies that we're going to be receiving, they can go towards utilities, correct?
Yeah, there's, I believe that, that because it would be assisting the community, this, um, you know, financial impacts of COVID, we could put some kind of program together to utilize that money to, again, it would have to be a program and we'd have to come up with a whole criteria and everything, but I think we can work out something like that.
So with that, is it a way that we can, um, if we come up with a program that says we'll pay fifty percent of their delinquent bill and then put them on a payment plan, or do you think that that won't work and they still won't pay?
I, I don't know. I, I'm not, I can't predict human behavior. But what, um, what we'd like to do is we, we've already surveyed other cities to just see where they're at and see what they think, um, is going to happen here. And I know that a couple of cities are starting to send out delinquent notices. A couple of cities have started shut offs a long time ago. Um, it's just, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of approach. So we need to do what's best with our city. And I think that just engaging with our customers and just trying to understand what their situation is and why they can't make payment. And then we'll have a better idea of, of maybe how to approach this and what type of assistance programs we want to put forth to, to solve this problem.
Okay, I, 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 I can one say that if, um, we put a program together and it could be tiered with different, you know, criterias and, and, and awards. But if, um, if a resident's, if, uh, that, sorry, it's eleven o'clock voice. If a resident pays half upfront, could we match? I would want to match it that way. I wouldn't want to pay first and then depend on the resident paying second. But if the resident was able to pay half, then could we then, eh, with the program, pay the other half?
I think, I mean, oh, that's possible, yeah.
Okay, um, anyone else want to add to it? I'm okay with you saying now delinquent notices, um, as long as we're not, uh, shutting off yet before we come up with a plan for the monies that's coming. Commissioner Luella?
Yes, um, thank you, uh, Director. I, I, I think we need to find out what the residents are able to do. Um, there may be people that are able to pay at this point. They might be able to pay over time. Um, I don't want to just simply offer, you know, that we're going to pay a certain amount until after we see what they're capable of doing. Cause some, like I said, some might be able to, some may have just been not paying. Um, some may have been in dire straits and they, and they couldn't pay. Um, you know, we don't know at this point. So I, I think it's better to at least send out something and then see what the response is and then we can work with them, you know, based upon what their responses are.
Okay, I'm okay with that too. And even, and even, uh, to add on to that, if, if one of the residents can't pay it all upfront, the half of it, maybe they can make payments until that half is paid off and then they can get a grant. So, you know, whatever we want to call it, um, but yeah, I do agree. Some residents will, probably won't be able to pay the entire half upfront, but as long as they're willing to come on some type of payment program or even seek help with the resources that you are going to send out with the delinquent notices, it, it allows us to know that they are putting forth effort in trying to bring that balance back into a positive. Anyone else who wants consensus to send these delinquent notices? Okay, I hear, I see.
I can see.
Okay, Vice Mayor, okay.
Thank you.
You are most welcome. Um, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Davis?
Okay, I wish I had my morning energy because, um, the thanks that I want to give out requires or should, it deserves my morning energy. But you guys, it is eleven o'clock at night, but I would be remiss if I did not thank, um, and, and say what a wonderful Earth Week, a huge success that Earth Week was from the very, um, beginning when we kicked it off with the oaks planted in the cemetery. I've heard a lot of comments back from residents who really, really love the fact that we're planting those oaks. Um, and that people in our community and our city deserve to have a beautiful landscape place where that their, their loved ones can rest in peace and something that's going to be beautiful for the future. Um, and then I will say the butterfly garden was absolutely stunning and that was Public Works again. It was just, uh, butterflies were coming. I have pictures of butterflies that were already there. So whoever chose those plants, the Public Works team again, Callie, those guys above and beyond to make it stunning. The residents are super happy. And I think with all of those things, um, you know, kind of lead to what we did in our strategic planning with our landscaping, the things that we said were important to us are also important to the residents. And so last but not least, you guys know it's my, my passion and my, and my, and my baby is the beach. And, um, I could not have been more thrilled to work with the most amazing team and group of people. I want to thank my colleagues for coming out to support. I want to thank the mayor for giving me another contact to continue this initiative. And I will bring some more information back to you, manager, and discuss it. But I want to thank you all for supporting my passion, the way that you guys have. Vice Mayor especially was my cheerleader over there, being a fiscal watchdog with his T-shirts and, and modeling for me and doing all those things. So I just want to thank, um, my, my teammates for being so supportive. And then of course, the manager, when I, when you and I and Candido first talked about this, you took this idea, you took this vision and you said, how can we elevate it? How can we make it bigger? How can we make it better? And, you know, that's what we started with our small team and it grew to Public Works, Fernando, Candido, Eleanor, Katia. I just, I want to start my whole little thing again, but I'm very passionate about it and I want to thank everybody. But I have to shout out Candido because he really, really, really was my right-hand man throughout this and he created miracles. When you're doing events, you think things have been communicated that haven't been communicated. And somehow, some way, he would figure out a way to get it done. So Candido is now my miracle man who can do anything. So thank you, Candido, for your hard work in leading this effort along with the manager and team. Uh, Linda Gonzalez for her wonderful certificates. And, um, really, the most beautiful thing was that we had so many different residents from so many different organizations coming out. And what you can't repeat is that the energy and the good feeling. We were, we talk about being one Dania Beach. We talk about not having, not, you know, not looking at race, not looking at economic status or, you know, um, sexual orientation. But we were truly one city with one mission, with one vision to get our beach pristine. And the energy and the spirit was so wonderful. And so for this to be the first thing that, you know, I proposed to the commission and for two hundred people, over two hundred people to come out, I just have to have enough energy to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, beyond, thank you to everyone who made it a true success. So with that, I made it. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Hi, Commissioner Luella?
Yeah, I, I'm going to keep it very simple tonight. I just want to say, um, what an amazing, uh, Earth Week we had and the, uh, various things that took place, the various events, the, um, the oaks over at the cemetery were beautiful. They're going to grow into these beautiful, beautiful trees. The, uh, beach cleanup was phenomenal. You see so many people come out, not just city employees, but residents from all over the city and, um, and, and groups of people, bringing more people with them and just it encouraged more people to come and clean the beach. There've been, I've been notified of at least two or three other beach cleanups that happened since then, so it was amazing. Um, and then of course, the butterfly garden, which although I couldn't get there on Friday when the, the initial, uh, planting was done, I did go over it this weekend and it's lovely. It really is. It's, it's a, it's a lovely spot and it, I like the, the, the size of it and the way that it's set up. And I'm really hoping that we can do more of these around the city in different locations. It would be a wonderful thing to have in lots of different places and keep things consistent. And maybe it can even be considered a form of art. I don't know, but, um, but in any event, it's, it's, I, I really like what we did. Um, it was a nice team effort to get everything, um, done last week. And, uh, um, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Otman?
All right, okay. Everyone to wake up. I need you to get your books out, your little phones. We need to settle on a date for the ribbon cutting, the ribbon cutting for the, um, the, uh, the, the mermaid tail. We're going to do it at the beach. Um, there's a, a nice little spot where it's going to be at. We're looking at June first, second, or third.
What time?
Um, Candido, are you on? Are you awake?
Well, right now, just until the time of, right now, I'm open for all three of those dates right now because it's so far out in Japan, so.
Sorry, I'm only good the first and third. I'm not good on the second.
First and third, okay. Commissioner Davis?
You're muted.
I'm double checking when my conference is. I have a conference for elected officials and I think it's that week, but I'm double checking. If it's not, then I'm, I'm good, but I haven't, it's, I was just registered for it, so it's not on my, my calendar. Just give me a second.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor Savino?
I'm good on June first, uh, and June third after, after ten thirty in the morning.
Okay, so first and third right now are looking the best. Um, and then to the net, so how it's going to go is we're going to do the, the, uh, the ribbon cutting for what we're calling the, the summer of, uh, summer of mermaids. And we'll cut the ribbon then. Hey, Candido, do you remember what time we were talking about?
Yes, we said, we said at the same time, five to seven PM for the ribbon cutting.
I would like to, I, I prefer the third, um, because the first is the day after Memorial Day. And I, that's not available.
Because the July, the July event, we said we were going to do in the morning because it was after school.
I didn't talk about that yet.
Right, so, so again, we, we mentioned five PM to seven PM for the June first, second, or third, but we could change the time.
Okay. You have the third, um, at five to seven. If, uh, Commissioner Davis is looking through our emails and she.
I'm good, yeah.
They're on the third.
I'm good too.
All right, perfect. So, um, we'll, you must see that. So then this is more of an FYI. So then a month after that, early July is going to be the deployment where they're going to go out. They're going to have the boat and kind of early-ish in the morning from seven thirty to nine, something like that. They're going to go out on the barge and put the mermaids in the water. On that same day, not at that time of the crack of dawn, we're going to do a beach cleanup and some other activities in the beach. So that will be early July. I'll give you the date when that's firmed up. Thirty days after that, after they put it in the water, that's when they're going to do the monitoring of it. And that's the date when we're going to go in the water. So those who want to go in the water will go diving. Those who wanted to stay on a boat will stay on the boat. Those who want to snooch and snooch, um, and we're going to do all those activities and that's going to be early August. So really the whole summer, every thirty days, we're going to have something. Um, but for right now, the only date I needed from you was the third and the specific time, uh, we'll, we'll email you about that. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Not going to forget about you today, Vice Mayor, your turn. You're muted.
No, I'm not. How's that?
That's great.
Well, I, while, while Commissioner Davis was talking, I recorded her conversation so that I could just play it back so, because she took care of just about everything. Um, so I won't play it since you heard her. The only thing I have to add is, um, I did talk to the city manager about a, a street cleanup and put something together for Old Griffin Road. Uh, there's a lot of debris on there and, uh, she's going to work with me on that. So we'll let the public know when we get ready to do that so we can clean up the Old Griffin Road from, um, you know, the federal highway all the way around to probably the bridge. The, um, other than that, uh, you know, everything else, butterfly garden, beach cleanup, uh, the cemetery, uh, the cemetery really looked good, I have to tell you. And, uh, other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I think. I'm good. That's all. I want to make sure it's sweet. Thank you.
I'll try to be short and sweet too. Um, I, I want to know when we're going to, um, do the oak trees for the other cemetery. Um, I think that that was great, uh, just a phenomenal facelift, uh, to the landscaping that is there. And I would like to see that, um, at the other one and then an update on, I guess, the mausoleum. Um, I know that there were some pieces that were falling, uh, when we did that one ceremony, uh, some time back. But definitely making sure that our cemeteries are trimmed and nice when it comes down to these holidays. As I know a lot of people go and visit their loved ones on holidays and there have been times where our cemetery is, has not been, um, you know, up to the standard that I think that we will all want them to be. I want to congratulate Commissioner Davis. I, I know about, um, throwing events and how stressful they are and how you're ripped left and right and everything else, but for being the facilitator and the leader of that beach cleanup, um, it was a phenomenal turnout and, uh, just the support of all the people who really love the beach. I, I hope that we can start kind of doing those things maybe once a quarter for, you know, for the city to do it and, and not that we have to keep buying shirts or anything else, but just for us to go out there and clean up, I think that you would get a, a great turnout and, um, it'll be something to, to grow. It is, it's a great, it was a great idea, a great turnout. So congratulations, um, to that. Um, I, I wanted to say one more thing about, uh, the fruit, the fruit stand. Um, there are a lot, there are a number of people or some other. There are a lot, there are a number of people or some other people. I know that there's been the guy that sells the stone crabs right when you're coming from the beach. And I, I want to look into, see what he was able to do that allows him to do that. I know his brother sells more Ravenswood. And I know that there is another place, because they're, they're everywhere, honestly. And I don't have an issue with it, but I, I do want to help Mr. Green get to yes. So I want to see what those other people are doing that they've been allowed to be there because they've been there for years. We all see the signs on the side of the road and, you know, they, I'm sure that they aren't legal. You know, we see panhandling, we see kids selling candy. And so I don't know if we need to make an amendment to the code or something to allow some flexibility because it's already happening. It's been happening for many of years. I don't know who was mad at Mr. Green that had turned him in and that, you know, he's had to go through this. But I want to make sure that we're treating everyone the same and everyone is going through the same process. Other than that, I am ready to go. I know we have a few more things. But thank you, thank you all for standing on this late at night. I, I still see some of our residents here and I know that our staff is here. Thank you for being diligent. And I look forward to a lot of the updates that are going to happen. With that, we'll go to our appointments. And right before that, I want to thank the commission and the staff for the beautiful flowers that you all sent me. I still have them. They still are good. The one flower arrangement from staff has orchids all the way throughout them. And it's just a beautiful, beautiful arrangement. And then they sent one from the commission. So thank you all. I just started physical therapy today. So this is my new buddy. And I'm in a lot of pain, so I can't wait for this meeting to be over so I can put my head to a pillow. Next, we have appointments. Is there any, anyone that has any appointments? I have none. No, but we'll go right past that and go to, to the administrative reports. Go ahead, City Manager Garcia.
Yes, Mayor James, thank you. And, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, members of our city team and our city residents watching. A couple of quick notes, because I know it's very late. But we've been working to ensure that we were not only a site for testing, but that we took the, the steps to become a site for vaccination. I know Mayor and Commissioner Llewellyn, Commissioner Ottman, I know how much you all wanted this. And I was talking to a, the Vice Mayor as well as Commissioner Davis. And we were able to be selected. I spoke to Bishop Scott last night. And we are looking at dates for May eleventh and May twenty-fourth as a vaccination site at St. Ruth's Missionary Baptist Church. And we're going to be coming forward with more details and we're going to get that information out, working with our PIO. Not only on social media, but I'm thinking that this is something that we're going to put on Code Red. So we're going to take every single step to get the word out on, on vaccination. So we'll bring you more information on that. We're also working, we just finished the installation of the decorative construction site wrap at the Dania Beach Grill. And we're working with public services and our Parks Department to also bring the signage forward to inform all our residents of the forthcoming RFP for the Dania Beach Grill as well as the park grants for Tutule Adra Park. So that's coming forward too. Mayor, we had the, the great, successful and wonderful ribbon cutting at Memorial Cemetery. And we have shifted gears and now we are working on West Lawn Cemetery. So we are looking to work throughout the month of May and, and do a nice ribbon cutting there in the month of June, right in time for Father's Day. So we're very excited about that. This past Wednesday, we met with FDOP and we're taking one really giant step forward and in regards to basically FDOP granting us the site with us having to pay. I know that you guys had allowed us to separate three hundred thousand and change, which is still out there. But if we're able to get it for free and can, and, and have them convey the one point four acres worth then to parking, that's something that we're working on now. We have a moratorium for speed homes as we're working to bring all the rest of the speed homes into compliance. And the Vice Mayor Salvino had a great idea for us to order these slow children at play fun. So here we have Tony, Tony the Turtle. Is going to be out and about as we think outside the box and bring these out to our families when kids are playing out there to slow traffic. And we're going to put a menu together of a variety of things that we're going to be doing from road scrap, striking, to future traffic calming, to Tony the, the traffic slow turtle, to actual permanent signage. So we're working on a multitude of things to keep our city safer and our city more beautiful. As a priority, we are working on the draft for the executive assistant to the city commission who's going to really provide additional customer service to all our stakeholders and, and our residents. So that's coming forward to you guys can add more of the requirements that you want of this position. Another one of your top priorities is the Parks Master Plan. And we look forward to getting together May eighteen from five to seven PM at the IT Carper. And as we continue on our monthly meetings, and thank you, Mayor, for this great idea, May is Mom's Month. So let me start by just wishing everybody Happy Mother's Day. And we are working on a multitude of programs with our after-school programs and with our city teams. And last but not least, congratulate our, our, our entire city commission for completing the strategic master plan. Now staff is working on the deliverables and we're looking forward to coming back in June so you can adopt the first ever strategic plan. And that concludes my manager report. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say that security in the back will be at all of the park facilities?
Yeah, we're, we're going to have this guy right around all our parks facilities outside where kids congregate. But we're also going to be driving through the city. And as you drive through the city, let us know of neighborhoods where you guys see kids playing outside and we'll deliver these to the different communities as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
I wouldn't dare add anything.
We appreciate that. Um, City Clerk?
Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, May eleven at five thirty is CRA board meeting, followed by a regular city commission meeting at seven PM. That's all I have.
All right, you all have a great night. I hope you sleep tight. Meeting adjourned.